Hear me out, guys? You're all right. Thanks. Provided by Pastor Patrick Womack of Bay Presbyterian Church. Pastor?
Thank you. Let's pray. Our most gracious and merciful God, our heavenly Father, we praise you and exalt you this day. As the sun has risen and we behold the beauty of creation around us, we're grateful for you, the Creator, in having placed us in such a beautiful part of your world. Lord, please bless this meeting, that the result will be the accomplishment of your will and the benefit of our community. Thanking you for all of those who serve our community. From these council members and mayor to those throughout who help us and are there, ready to protect us and save us when necessary. Thanking you for law enforcement, firefighters, and medical personnel, a whole host of others. Please bless and provide for each one who serves. And Lord, we pray that you will be our shield and defender. We pray you will protect us from storms and disasters. And Lord, grant that each of us, in turn, may do our share in serving, providing for our neighbors, loving them as we love ourselves, as you have commanded in your holy word. So please bless us here, that in this gathering, through us or in spite of us, your will will be accomplished, for the benefit of all and for your glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Councilman Folic, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Okay, can we have a motion to permit Mayor Gibson to participate today remotely?
Okay.
And I'll be sitting in, in his absence.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
All right, now we have public comment on agenda items. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to move to presentations and proclamations. Arlene, if you could step up front, we're gonna bring up Vincent Rosado for 20 years of service to the city. Okay.
I know, yeah.
Vincent, if you're in there, come on out.
Vincent, you have to. But we need a picture.
Okay, so we don't get too many of these, so this is a special one. Twenty years of service presented to Vincent Rosado as the 23rd day of May 2025, in appreciation and recognition for 20 years of public service to the city of Bonita Springs, Florida.
Vincent, in recognition of your 20 years of service, we wanted to share that we're very proud and we want to celebrate with you this day. Over the past two decades, Vince has played a vital role in keeping our facilities running safely, smoothly, and reliably. Vince's commitment to hard work and attention to detail have made lasting impressions on our operations team. Whether it's responding quickly to urgent repairs, maintaining high standards, middle-of-the-night alarm calls of squirrels by cameras, or simply being a steady, dependable presence to all of us. Vince exemplifies what it means to be a true professional and friend. Henry Ford says that quality means doing what is right when no one is looking. And not everyone always sees Vince every day, but he is behind the scenes making sure that this well-oiled machine is running the way it needs to be. Thank you, Vince, for your loyalty, craftsmanship, and 20 years of outstanding service. We deeply appreciate you and your contribution to the citizens of Bonita Springs, and we look forward to working with you many more years.
All right, now we're cooking. Public hearing, zoning and land use. City Clerk, could you read the ordinance title into record?
This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, approving a variance from Land Development Code, Section 4-1894, Paragraph B, which requires a water body setback of 25 feet along the north side to allow a setback of 15 feet from the abutting north side street right-of-way for a proposed single-family home on a residential property located at 26409 Bay Road, strap number 25-47-24-B2-00200.0240, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34134, and providing for an effective date.
City Attorney, can you swear in those giving testimony?
Absolutely, thank you. Anyone here today who would tend to testify on this matter, including staff, would you please stand and be sworn? Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Good morning. Mike Feegun with Community Development for the Record. I'll just give you a brief recap, and if you'd like me to go through a more thorough presentation, I'm happy to do so. As Mike had read into the record, this is a property located on Little Hickory Island. It's an older property. It was plotted in 1949, which predates the incorporation of the city of Bonita Springs. It predates the incorporation of Lee County zoning regulations. And by all accounts, it is an undersized property for the zoning district it is currently in, through no fault of the applicant. It was just created that way. And recognizing that it was undersized, Lee County had actually approved a setback variance on this exact lot back in 1990. It was tied to a very specific and small footprint, which, when you, if you've been up and down the beach or off of Bay Road, you understand that the development pattern is rather specific out there. So that, that footprint really would be incompatible with what's been developed all around it. And as part of that 1990 variance that was approved, there were setback relief given on three out of the four sides of the property. With this particular design, they're only requesting relief from one side, which is the north side, which also encompasses a boat ramp. And that, that was the main purpose of requesting the variance. It's a street setback plus a water body boat ramp setback, which really ate into the, the buildable area of an already undersized lot. So that's the purpose of the request. The zoning board heard this request back in May, voted unanimously in approval for the request, seven to zero. We did have first reading of this request in front of city council back in June. It didn't seem there were any concerns raised at that time, so with that, I can go forward with a presentation or just address questions that you may have.
Motion to approve.
Second. Do we need public comment?
Do we need to do approval in a second?
We are, second reading is final approval.
Do we need public comment?
We would need public comment. Is there any member of the public who wish to speak on this item?
No public comment?
So Chris made a motion. I second.
Anybody else? All right, roll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic. Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson. Mayor Gibson, how do you vote?
Aye, President. Aye. Can you hear me?
Thank you, yes.
That was an aye. For the record, that was an aye.
Yes. That's our story, and we're sticking with it.
Okay. Motion passes?
Yeah.
Yes, the motion carries.
Next, we go to item B. City Clerk, could you read the ordinance title into the record?
This is the second reading of an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, adopting an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map to redesignate approximately 1.3 acres, plus or minus, from the public slash semi-public future land use category to the general commercial future land use category, located at 25071 Chamber of Commerce Drive, strap number 21-47-25-B2-00001.1090, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34135, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
Good morning again. Mike Feegun with Community Development for the Record. As Mike had read into the record with the title block, this is the property more popularly known as the Chamber of Commerce Building, located within the city. It was established as the Chamber of Commerce Building back in 1995, up until a few years ago where they moved out and sold the building. The purpose of the request is that there's a conflict between what's allowed in the zoning and what's allowed in the future land use category. The future land use category tends to be very restrictive on that property to really nonprofits and governmental-style uses, and that's it. You have the property that's in a commercial zoning district, though, that allows a lot more uses to occur on-site. So it is the intent of the current property owner to be able to redesignate the property to the general commercial future land use category so that they can operate an eye center out of there, or an ophthalmology clinic. They would be repurposing the existing building, the existing parking, the existing landscaping, with the understanding that they will have to bring certain aspects of the site up to code. They are aware of that and have agreed to that. One of those aspects is a sidewalk connection that's gonna run from the site through Chamber of Commerce Drive out to 41, very similar to what the fire station to the north had to do. So they are aware that they still have a little bit of work to do before they could actually occupy the site. But from the staff perspective, we don't see any concerns or conflicts with the redesignation. It's a great way to adaptively reuse an existing building that's been sitting vacant for several years now. This case was heard by the LPA back in May. They voted for unanimously to approve the change. We also had first reading of this case in front of council back in June. There were not any concerns raised at that time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you want a presentation, I have one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With staff's recommendation, but don't we have to have public comment first?
Not before the motion. Any members of the public who should speak on this item?
Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're onto presentations. We're gonna have Lisa come up and do the financial presentation. Thank you.
Good morning. Today, we have our audit firm, Ashley Brown &amp; Smith, here. And their partner, Tony Smith, will be presenting by Florida statute and by his professional standards as an auditor and a CPA. He is going to point out certain facts that he feels that you all need to be communicated directly to you all in the report. So I'll ask for your patience. He'll call your attention to different pages of the report, and if you'd welcome him, here he is.
Hi, good morning. My name is Tony Smith. I'm with Ashley Brown &amp; Smith CPAs in Punta Gorda. Appreciate your time. Thank you for having us. I'd like to first welcome back Mayor Gibson and welcome Mr. Fitzpatrick. I appreciate you guys having me, ladies and gentlemen, for having me. We are your auditors. We audit, we get together with your audit team a couple times during the year. But I also wanted to point out that we are your auditors, and we're available to, to counsel as well as, as staff. So anytime during the year, if, if counsel has, has a question about the financial statements or, just like staff, you're, you're free and welcome to reach out to us and, and we'll help you in any way we can. So we're covering the annual financial statements for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2024. I believe everybody's had a copy. Everybody's had a chance to review it. I'm just gonna go over the basics, some of the stuff that I'm required to cover, but if there's anything that you guys found in the statements that you want to cover, we can, we can address that as well. So page two. I'm gonna read the second paragraph. This is, this is the, the main audit over the financial statements. And, and it reads, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So our, in our audit, we've audited the financials of the city, and we, we didn't find anything that was materially incorrect. And then going back to page four, so you guys, you have a financial statement audit, and then since you had expended more than $750,000 of federal grant money, you also had a separate, single audit that was required, which just drills down on specific audit, internal control requirements that were required to audit. So on page four, the fourth paragraph, we also state, "In our opinion, the combining and individual non-major fund financial statements and schedule, and schedules and the schedule of expenditures of federal awards are fairly stated in all material respects." So we're gonna flip back now to the single audit section, which I was referring to. So starting on page 98, this is, this is the single audit that I was talking about, so. If you flip to 103, this is a listing of all the federal grant expenditures that the city received and expended in fiscal year 24. So as part of that, now we'll flip back to page 98, and this is more granting agencies. If you're, you're, the, the city applies for a lot of grants. And this is the opinion that the granting agencies weigh heavily on. So the second paragraph, it says, "In our opinion, the city complied in all material respects with the requirements referred to above that are applicable to each of its major federal programs for the fiscal year ended September 30, 24." So our audit, we're required to, to select specific grants of yours that are material to be tested. We test those, and then again, they didn't have, they didn't have anything material that we're required to, to, to point out. Next, I'd like to flip all the way to the front, because I would be remiss if I didn't point out the achievements of, of your finance department. Page VI, in the very front. So this is, this, this achievement is, is provided by the Government Finances Officers Association. So the city presents their financial statements. Your city goes above and beyond what the requirements are of the state and the federal government. And they submit their financial statements to the association, which then they're graded by other districts, cities, local governments, and only the best of the best receive this excellent, this certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting. So this award was actually for 2023. Everything has been applied for, for 2024, so hopefully you guys will get, you'll get that in 2024. But this requires a lot of dedicated time by the staff, finance department. I think this, this achievement should be celebrated, and I, I really appreciate their, their, their support and their help during our audit. So if there's any, any questions you guys have, we can go over that. Yes, sir?
Tony, first of all, thank you. One question I have is, how long have you been preparing audits for our city? Meaning your firm?
I have been with the firm since 2010, and we have been the auditor since then, sir.
And any, any problems that you've had to face?
Some minor internal control deficiencies along the way, usually only, only around federal and state single audits. Federal and state single audits aren't always required, so again, it goes back to, if you expended, and the rules have changed drastically from 2010, when I first started, until now. So audits that might have, in, in an audit, let's, let's take a single audit for, for, you know, for example. We would, well, we'll go over this one if you'd like.
Oh, just, you're, you're hitting on my point. For 15 years that you're aware of, our city is, our city staff have performed above.
Above, above and beyond, and received the, the certificate of excellence as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
First of all, I, I wanna, I'm very pleased by the audit that came out here, because after the recent stuff that happened to our partners down to the south and some of the issues that were raised, to come at the opposite end of the spectrum is wonderful, and this is a true compliment to Lisa, Arlene, the entire staff that supports the function here, and I'm very proud to be part of this organization. So thank you very much for the analysis and bringing to light the certificate of excellence. That's, that's just a wonderful thing. Congratulations, guys.
Come on, you're making it easier, y'all.
Oh, we can make it hard if you want.
I'm sure you can, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Lisa, and staff.
Now we're moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We'd like to, go ahead.
I'd like to pull two items, please, for discussion. P is in Papa and Q is in Quebec. Nothing serious, but just want to get some clarification.
Great, okay, so let's pull P and Q for the moment and vote on the rest of the agenda.
Motion to approve the rest of the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and, go ahead.
So basically, let's start with P, and it's the same question for both P and Q. There's been significant increases, but in meeting with Arlene and looking at the reports, the use of, and I just, it just escaped me right now, so a senior moment, but basically the inflation indicator that they're using, it's not identified, so I'm trying to figure out what's the inflation number that they use both CH2M and the Sheriff's Department for, the budget increases. It's not identified.
It is not identified. I, I would say we could go about it a couple ways. We can hold them and find out that answer, or we can pass it. We will get you the answer, so you know what they are.
You know, it's, it's an ECI CPI calculation. I'm trying to figure out right now which ones we're. I'm John Dolma.
Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
I'm looking for the, I'm looking for the, the way right now, 70% to one, 30% to the other.
And for the public and laypeople, what does that mean?
One more time in English.
Thanks, Justin.
I believe it's 3.58%.
Well, this is, this, this is the LCSO contract, not the, not the engineering contract. I think he's talking.
No, no, he's talking engineering.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's talking the engineering one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So we've got answer on one.
Well, we do, but just we don't. I've been asked Lisa if she's, I think I'll let you get away that easy, did you, Lisa? So 3.58, we know what the current rate of inflation is. If we went back a month, it would be lower, but right now, we're looking at about 2.7%, so the justification for using 3.58 would be what?
Well, it's actually stated in your original contract that you have with CH2M Hill and Jacobs Engineering. So given that it's stated in your contract, I defer to Derek about that. It, it's, it's set in place for all the years going forward. If you wanted to change that, I would think we would need to mean the contract. for all the years going forward. If you wanted to change that, I would think we would need to mean the contract to include a different provision for an escalator.
Great idea.
If that's your direction.
So, you know, there's a lot of different varieties of ways that these kind of contracts get addressed. Sometimes it's time materials plus a percentage above. Sometimes it's like this this item, it's a CPI index. So they're they're tying it. It sounds like John was saying they're tied to two different indexes, probably one for some for building services, one for engineering services. To give a context of that, if you if this was a contract with a waste hauler, there may be an actual waste CPI, something that's and that would be traditional that you tie it to because the general inflation rate is generally not consistent with specific industry areas. For law enforcement, for instance, that may not have a parallel in the CPI. And so the question that you were asking makes a lot of sense because what are we tied to for that that purposes? If you'd like us to investigate and look at some other possibilities, we could we can do that.
Back when our budget was a lot smaller, it didn't have that significant an effect. Now, as we get larger, what I'm looking for, do we have the right margin and the right index that we're utilizing?
Question also, is the same contract LCSO is statutorily doing the same thing with Fort Myers Beach, I would assume, and they're doing it anywhere else that they contract that they're the main law enforcement entity. So I imagine that number's probably the same in those entities as well. If, okay, so we can do this two ways, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Derek. Number one, we can pull both, if that's what you would like, and we can get you the answers. Or we can pass it, and either way, we can still get you the answers. And then if we find it that the numbers are not something that we like, then we can discuss how we would address that in in forward years.
So for purposes of, so for purposes of, I'll just go with general indexing for that purpose. I don't know and and what what a reasonable basis for an index is for law enforcement services. I'm sure that there's probably a CPI category for security services and things like that. I don't think that a night watchman is the same as a sheriff's deputy. I would probably say that that we would ask the sheriff how they how they budget for regular increases and plan that because that's probably going to be, given the size of that organization and the services they provide, they're probably going to have a better index either internally or what is consistent with the industry standards across, you know, other public law enforcement entities. For something like the CH two M Hill, they're probably the CPI provides a very good basis for doing that. Because of the broad range of services that that Jacobs Engineering's provide, I think it'd be very difficult to pin it down to just one particular CPI index. So that's why it's it's a weighted score in this case. But if you'd like us to look into into either of those, we probably could. It's probably just more informational, getting getting more information back to you.
Two of our largest contracts going into a year that I'm not comfortable with what could happen next year, so I just want to be prudent.
I guess my question, first of all, relative to our contract for community development. What this is predicated upon a historic contract that gets renewed on a regular basis and revised for increased costs. When was the last time we reviewed and updated the scope of services to be provided? And is the scope of service still relevant to what our community looks like today?
We have updated the scope. Every couple of years, we've we've changed. Scope has changed multiple times. Different issues come up, you know.
And the last, do you know when that last one was?
I believe the last scope change was probably last year. I I'm just can't I not recall exactly what it was.
And so councilman, annually, there is a discussion that comes up based upon the the compensation amount. During those times, if there's been a change that's needed or a change that needs to be clarified, that's when it usually goes in. I wanted to say it was like two years ago, maybe three years ago, we had added and amended some additional scope. To date, the way that we've approached the contract has generally been if there are items that would normally be included in a community development department, those items are just included as part of the scope and part of the delivery. If we need to specify something because it's either new or there's been a significant change in how something is is treated or functions, then we can specify that in the contract if we need to. But the general agreement pretty much for the last fifteen years, seventeen years, has been if a community development department performs a function, that will be a function that's part of the scope.
Question. Yes. Do Lisa, do we have, or Arlene, do we have a formal performance evaluation of of community development? I mean, we're we're talking about compensation, but I guess the first question is, you know, do we have a way or have we done a performance evaluation of Jacobs under the contract?
So Jacobs provides quarterly reports, and John can add to this, with criteria that we've asked them to show, you know, calls for service, time of length of those service, and those are the reports that we provide to council. If there's something in a different format or something more specific, but there there are reporting, we've asked for Jacobs to provide those reporting. We've asked them to go to council so that it's more transparent. Previously, it had been just to management, and I think it's more transparent for the public to see those.
We can sort of set performance off to the side that I I have not heard anybody say that performance is a problem, so.
No, and what I and I can clarify some examples of what John's referring to. So we did amend the scope, I recall, after Surfside to look at providing services for specific engineering needs. But as another example of services that were taken in-house without compensation, I would say that the additional requirements of CRS that have developed through the years, those have not been an increase in the scope. They've just fallen on the floodplain coordinators duties. As that duty has changed, for example, we talk about our staff, what initially was neighborhood services has really moved into more to the function of emergency management, a heavier hold on emergency management. So there has been ebb and flow of those, but when we brought those to council, we've wanted direction on whether we should seek, you know, increase in scope on those.
Thank you.
I can I will I will say that, and this is more specific to the sheriff's contract. I represent a number of of the communities in this in this county as well as communities that that contract for additional sheriff sheriff services. And in diving into trying to figure out the exact budget for any one particular community can be very difficult because of the shared costs over the entire system and the way the counties hold them accountable for budgeting. And maybe I'm getting a little bit over my skis on this one, but I just pulled up some of the other cities that that I've dealt with to see what the translation is between the amount of monies that they pay and the FTE and the number of service that they get. And they're paying a lot more money for a lot less service. So I think it's a I think part of this has to be, to the last point, it's a level of service analysis, too. You know, to make sure that the costs are in line, but you're getting the services you're asking for, whether whether it's Jacobs Engineering or or the sheriff.
I guess I'd go back to the same question that I asked about the Jacobs contract and that we're at least know that we're reviewing viewing the scope and agreeing to the scope once every two, three years, it sounds like. I guess I'd ask the same question from the Sheriff's Department in terms of detail. A lot of it's tied to the incremental add of staff. But my real question is, is that one I'd like to clarify, is Fort Myers Beach currently on a community policing thing? My understanding is that we were the only with.
They did. They they took our model. So essentially, we did it, and then they watched us for a couple of years. They tried to do it. It failed. Then they elected Allers mayor and it passed. So now they have their own smaller version. I think there's only like three or four or something like that.
Okay, well, it's my understanding when I met with Commander Blake in terms of his updates to us is I asked specific questions. Who, what communities beyond Benita Springs were the primary users of this community policing? And the response was, I thought was, is that we were the only provider of that service because essentially there's a six million dollar gap between what their total budget is versus what's funded by the county. And we're carrying about three, well, we were carrying about three point three million. And we're looking at going three point six, and that other miscellaneous stuff is from other services they provide. And that was my only real question is, is have we revisited the scope? Is it meeting our services? Again, it goes back to the the performance evaluation as to what our expectation, the expectation of council.
The scope of what they provide is the value proposition that got us into the relationship.
I I understand.
So I mean, the the scope that they provide is significantly higher than any of the, so, for example, Sanibel, Fort Myers, Naples have their own police departments.
Yes.
They have nothing. They have one eighteenth of the resources that we have at our disposal with LCSO. So it is, it's the value proposition, what they bring to the table, we're getting more out of the deal than they are by far, especially considering our lack of accounting for the population increases that we've had since the onset of this contract.
See, to that point, I'm glad you brought it up. If we ever discuss having our own police department, I will be the first guy to resign.
It's a horrible idea.
To your point, we get, we have a professional sheriff's department, as many other counties have found out. Doing your own policing, it's not physically responsible. And to your point, the level of the or the professionalism of the officers, unfortunately, in city and municipal police departments is not the level of our Lee County Sheriff's Office. But again, it's a big bump, and it's the question I've gotten over the last month from most people is are too big, which the reason I brought them, people are wanting to know, why are we spending this much money? And I think if we can answer that question, just with the what they're using for the inflation indicator, I'll feel a lot better. And I think some of our constituents will as well.
If they, I mean, just population increase alone should answer that.
Not not really. I mean, we we don't have population increase to to justify this kind of a bump.
Well, we do because the initial contract was done in two thousand and fourteen. So and we did, and it was set on a city that was based for forty thousand people. We're now at sixty.
But we've raised.
And then we've only given them two officers a year since two thousand and twenty when I got elected. So that's only six officers, and you're talking literally a city that is sixty thousand that was based for forty thousand. So I mean, and there has been no adjustment until twenty twenty to adjust for that. So you're talking over a decade of growth with no compensation in regards to the amount of boots on the ground. So I mean, that is, that's that's just, that's how we did it. We should have addressed it sooner. We didn't, but we shouldn't operate under the fact that, oh, wow, what's going up? Well, it should have gone up because we went up and we didn't, we didn't, just like, that would be like telling Dolmer's outfit, they have to do all these other things for all these people. We don't adjust for it.
Respectfully, just wants and needs are two different things, and I'm concerned about, you know, what our revenues are going to be next year.
What's more of a need than law than the safety of our citizens? What do we do that's more important than that?
If we had the money, I'd want to put another ten officers on the streets, and then it would be great. We have traffic enforcement with all kinds of things that we want, but at the time, let's find that balance. But I want to know what were they basing the their inflation or the increase on?
How do you guys think we should move forward?
Can I can I clarify? I did have an opportunity to talk to Commander Blake just briefly, and one of the things I think would be helpful to share as well is that the rate that we receive, we only play for FTEs. We don't play for the cars and the additional. But there is a standard one size fits all for those employees. So it's probably a blended rate that you're seeing for the actual cost of those employees.
Is that what we talked about yesterday?
Yes. So so my understanding is, is that not to dive too much into the details of it, but there's a one rate charge for each deputy sergeant and such on. And then that is a blended rate because you do have different levels of service of those employees who may either be paying hu be paid higher, more veteran employee, or maybe being paid lower if they're just coming on. What I what we have seen in the throughout the years is that the majority of them have been more veteran service members.
And additionally, the sheriff's department, out of their own budget, and they don't need to do this, but they always have, our SRO officers are paid within, no more?
Yes, they are, but.
Okay, so I mean, bottom line, there we have a lot of added value with them that is going to it is the amount that you're talking about. I understand the principle of what you're doing, but the amounts that we save with this deal, it's not comparable.
There's a lot of people watching this, are going to be paying attention to this today, that need to hear what we're saying because it is the biggest question I've gotten from people in the community.
Go, Chris?
Yeah, I I'm troubled by this whole by this whole amendment. We're not looking at all the dollars that go towards policing in this town. You know, we all pay real estate taxes into Lee County. And if you take a look at the LCSO budget that's funded by oblorem taxes, and you look at the amount of taxes paid by Benita Springs residents and businesses, we're already out of that tax base, providing over ten million dollars a year for LCSO services. Granted, most of those services are going to unincorporated Lee County. But, you know, we're already paying ten point two, and now we're being asked to pay three point six. So we're up to thirteen point eight million, not three point six million for for policing and safety. You know, I think we need to to look at having an independent analysis of, you know, what are we getting for our money and are we being accountable to the taxpayers in terms of providing the safety that everybody wants? I'm not talking about defunding the police, but I'd like to know, you know, what what's the performance metrics look like? And I'm not done. So we should also consider that improvements in crime and safety may not be be entirely attributable to local enforcement. You know, ICE came through, and as a result of that, you know, whatever criminal elements were with the illegal migrant population probably was removed, although I don't have a, and I don't think Lee County Sheriff's Office knows that either, but they have a two eighty six agreement that might be willing to be have that information shared. My view of it is, is that, you know, we're perfectly fine with the level of service we get now. We shouldn't be increasing staffing until we're assured that increasing staffing is actually going to result in in better performance for our residents and businesses. So what I propose is that we adopt we delay adoption of Amendment nineteen. We keep Amendment eighteen in place until we can get that, get a independent study that says we ought to, you know, this is what we need to do, or we need to do more, or we could actually do less. You know, it's a big budget item. If you look at the increase year over year, if you go back to the April minutes of the council, you'll see Amendment eighteen, that Amendment eighteen talks about a little over three million. This is takes us to three million six. It's about a six hundred thousand dollar increase, and that's exactly almost the amount of increased oblorem taxes we're going to collect. So whatever other priorities we we want to fund with the increase in oblorem taxes to the city, they're out the window because we're dedicating them under Amendment nineteen to the LCSO. I'm not in favor of that unless we know what we're doing. And I don't think we know what we're doing until we get some analysis of it done and say, you know, we're doing the right amount, we need to do more, we need to do less. That's my view of it. So I'm going to vote against Amendment nineteen as it is now. I'll vote to delay it and implement it over after we get the study, but that's my position on it.
And when you say a study, you're not talking about when Captain Lee comes in here and he reads us all these numbers stating that we have calls of service that have gone up significantly every single year?
I'm talking about bringing in.
More people than we can deal with, that study, because he's done it annually.
I'm talking about bringing in either somebody from FGCU. I'm talking about bringing in somebody from Lee County MPO that does does these kinds of analyses and so forth.
Why wouldn't it be LCSO that was telling us what the calls?
Because they're not independent, Jesse. I want an independent analysis. They're a party to the contract.
So you want an independent analysis on that, that's going to be a green sheet. But I think Laura has been waiting to talk patiently.
I'd just like to say, according to Emira Fox, the sheriff's department is doing a phenomenal job. We are one of, well, actually, we would be the safest county in southwest Florida if Lehigh Acres wasn't in our backyard. But Lehigh Acres is getting all sorts of, they're getting a Amazon, a Walmart, a Home Depot, and a Lowe's. So there are going to be jobs that people can do in Lehigh Acres and sidewalk. So, there are going to be jobs that people can do in Lehigh Acres and sidewalks and et cetera. So, the attention is, I think, going to correct, and we will then take over. Calhoun County is being the safest county in southwest Florida, because their backyard is Marco Island. So, we have phenomenal, phenomenal citizens in Benita Springs, and our sheriff's department does a great job. And according to Amira Fox, a phenomenal job. So, um, I don't know what FTC you can bring to the picture, other than, I mean, we could have Amira Fox come in.
Well, would you take a question? If we're doing such a great job, then why do we need to add more?
Have we added more?
Yes.
Employees this year?
Under this budget, we are.
I, I want to clarify, you, you don't have additional positions in this Amendment nineteen.
If you go back to the eighteenth amendment, you got three more people.
You have people in the eighteenth amendment that are covered in the nineteenth amendment, but you do not have additional, you know, that, as Councilman Purdon mentioned, you had a, a track record of adding people from twenty twenty onward.
Why have we got another six hundred thousand?
You're, you're covering the balance, because they come online, you know, midstream of the, the budgetary cycle, plus inflationary purposes. But I, I just want to clarify, you do not have additional positions contemplated in this, that were not previously approved.
And that's the reason for my question beginning with, we're not adding more police officers, more deputies, but we do have a, a substantial increase, and I'm just, want to get to the bottom of-
And part of the increase is what he just explained.
I'm sorry?
Part of that increase is-
Part of your, yeah, just to clarify, part of your increase is, you, you added them in eighteen, midstream. They're coming, you know, the, the full, the full financial burden of them are coming online in nineteen, but there, there's no additional, and then you have inflation accounted for.
There is an inflation factor.
Correct.
That's my original question was, what are they basing that on?
Correct. It's a two-part increase, you know, it's, it's what you voted on in eighteen, plus an inflationary number.
So, when's, where's the top?
Where does it stop, did you say?
Where does it stop? Where, you know?
That's a question for, for council.
Do we go to five million? I mean, how do we make that decision going forward?
What is the percentage of, like, John had given us, it's like three point five, maybe four. And so, for the police department, Lisa, approximately?
We think it's about four percent. We want to defer to them as well, because we do believe it's a blended rate over all the different components of the contract, which was spoken about earlier, but historically, it's been around four percent.
Yeah, so-
We just assume that's-
When we were talking about it yesterday, it was four point three percent.
So, can we assume-
I do want to defer to them, so we could get that precise number from them. I don't want to misspeak.
Okay. So, if we're not adding, we're, we're, I'm assuming they're taking in cost of living, insurance, prices raising for health insurance. I mean, I think they're doing an overall amazing job. They gave us our, the information to us of how, you know, Benita Springs is really standing out, and they have shown that with their numbers, and I've, you know, spoke to them. I mean, I, I agree, I mean, it is an increase, we have it budgeted, I, I don't know, I, I feel like we-
So, to be perfectly objective, this is not about the job the sheriff's department's doing. I think they're doing a great job. I'm so delighted that we have the sheriff's department and not our own police department, not just because of the cost, but for performance. But what I want to know, when we're planning going forward, what do they use as an inflation indicator? So, next year, when we're doing budget, the following year, we know what the sheriff's department and what Jacobs are using as their, so we can plan it out properly.
I, I, I want to, I want to make a, a correction. So, I pulled up the Jacobs' original contract, it is a blended rate, but it's blended between the national seat, non-seasonal CPI and, uh, the ECI, which is the employee, employment cost index. So, that's probably a fairly reasonable standard. What I would say for, for cost increases, if you, if we want to do a revisit, uh, in the next budget cycle for, because where we are right now, for scope and whether that scope changes, maybe that's probably the, the better way of standing.
That's a great answer, that, that I'm comfortable with.
And then, with respect to the, the sheriff's department, um, what I would say is, for us to move forward to, to get, because there's, there's part of the co, the other, the entity that has the information on the cost increases is not here, so we need to get that information, but the other side of it is the level of service discussion. What, what I have seen done in the past, and, and is, and I'll use like a, a fire department as an example. You know, they may use like the ISO, the insurance rating, to give a example, that's their level of service, but there's also independent fire analysis that will say, based on your, your call rates, staffing, et cetera, this is your, your quote-unquote level of service, and they sometimes will translate that directly into your budget, how much you need to spend. And then, of course, there's individual local factors, like what's the cost of living, how much is it to attract talent, things like that. With the sheriff's department, what I would probably recommend is, I don't know what the standard is, but there is probably a baseline level of service that the sheriff provides to, uh, and I remember these conversations from Fort Myers Beach, when, at the time, they were just getting one deputy seasonally for traffic control during, during spring break, things like that, is there is a baseline level of service that the, the sheriff's office provides, based on so many populations, based on call volume, et cetera. And then, what is, what is the city getting above that? What is the extra levels of services we're getting, or what are the, the demands? That way, you can see what you're getting, and then have them, so that could be something that we could definitely look into, to a study. But we need, I think they could also provide that information, hopefully by the next meeting, so that then we can, while we try to figure out if there is a desire for a study, we'll have to figure that scope out and, and go after that. So, I would give them the opportunity to present that, and then have them explain the budgetary increase, because I don't think we have the information for it.
After that, then the study, because me, why are we spending money in a study when we can get the information from them? And then, if you're not satisfied, then we can do a study.
Well, I, I think you do need to get the information from them, because at, at the same time, if we come back with a study that says X, and they're, they're a party to the contract, and they said, well, we can't provide that level of service for that dollar amount, then we're gonna, you know, we need to have the, the conversation about how in, the level of service at the same time, because they're ultimately going to determine what their cost is, and if they don't want to bear, you know, additional costs in the contract. So, I, I think we need to, to get those answers from them while we, we investigate what, what kind of budgeting analysis we can do. Because it's very difficult, and I've, I've tried in the past with the sheriff's departments throughout the state, it's very difficult, because they're getting pressure from counties, some counties, you, you can't, it's not apples to apples in every community. Sometimes they, they share liability, sometimes they, they share medical expenses, they have pooled resources, they have other communities that are chipping in, sometimes there's a lot more cities, like there is in Lee County, with their own, their own services. Plus, there's, every year, there's a bunch of unfounded mandates that also come down to them, the same as us. And so, it's not, it's not as easy as just a, like a business decision would be to say, this is what the budget should be, because they're affected similar to us, and they have to explain that. I, I can't explain it for them.
I, I agree, Derek. I mean, I, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to say, look, there's a way that we, we use to evaluate the overall performance. Yeah, we, you know, I'm sure LC SO gives us, you know, the, the crime statistics and all that. But we come to a, we come to some sort of conclusion about what that performance is. We come to a conclusion about, do we need more? Do we need less? And we make a prudent decision on what the contracts should cover. That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, and I think, I go back to the very simple question. I've got a lot of wonderful statistics, I feel very good about community policing within, within our area. But my fundamental question is, and wasn't really answered, is the village of Astero does not pay for community policing. Are they significantly, are, are we three point six million dollars safer than Astero? I don't know, Astero is not Benita Springs. But I just ask the fundamental question, is what's the pay-for service within our property taxes? And to Chris's point, the incremental value of, of the increased value that we're paying.
Okay. It almost sounds like you're saying we pay for Astero's policing, and we don't. And I think we need to call the question, either you pull it, or I say we vote for the amendment, for the consent amendment, as is, and then we look into the two issues, and then we could do a green sheet and bring up the issues separately.
Bring up what issues separately?
Well, you have a concern, well, I think everybody's okay with the Hill Engineers contract. But it's the police, the sheriff's department that you want more details about?
My question, the original question was, what did they use to justify the increase?
Okay, again, you're looking at it, we added people-
We get the answer, and we vote on it at the next meeting.
All right, so why don't we just call the question, we'll vote on it. If it doesn't pass, then we can talk about it again. Okay? All right, let's call the question.
We don't have a motion to vote.
I motion to call the question.
On, on which item?
To the, the, yes.
Pass both items on the consent agenda as is, is the vote.
We need it separate, to be separate.
There needs to be a second.
Laura?
I motion, you?
I can second.
Second.
Okay, second, from Jamie.
Jamie, second, thank you.
Councilmember Folic?
No.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
No.
Councilmember Bogaz?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
No.
Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
The motion carries four to three.
All right. Do we have any further comment on a consent agenda, dare I ask? All right, moving right along, mayor and council member items. Councilmember Folic on the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Yes, sir, we have, uh, one more member, and he is actually a previous member, currently the, um, he's out of the, or the commander of our Foreign Legion, so for personal reasons, he stepped off, and he's stepping back. So, we now have a, a full slate on the committee.
Wonderful.
And what's his name, the new guy?
Just one blank.
Okay, no, no worries.
Thanks.
Adam Corrigan.
Adam, yeah, thank you.
He's also commander of the American Legion.
Oh, cool.
Does all the work for us.
Good ad, good ad. Okay, great.
Thank you.
We need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic? Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, now we have, uh, affirm the mayor's appointment of Amy Cumbah as the chairperson of Arts and Public Places, former councilwoman Cumbah. Mayor Gibson, uh, would you like to speak on B, please?
Uh, sure. Um, you know, we just had somebody that had to resign, and I think former councilwoman Cumbah would do an excellent job as the chairperson. And, uh, you know, I hope you guys would, uh, support that.
Motion to approve?
And I will give it a second, she'll be shocked.
No, she won't. No, just so, if everyone's aware, she's actually served on the committee now for the last year, and she was the vice chair. And the only reason that our chair resigned, or had to resign, was she's been moved to Lehigh Acres to take over a non-performing school, but she certainly did not want to leave. It's, it's a great board, and Amy, I think, will do a great job.
Do you want to do a roll call? Councilmember Bogaz?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number C, consider, uh, the proposals submitted by Zap and Company LLC in response to the RFP twenty-five fifteen, production and management of Fiesta Benita event. This is, uh, the same company who's been doing a great job with us for years.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call. Just for clarification, what is being approved?
Uh, we're approving the production management of Fiesta Benita by Zap and Company.
Thank you, okay. Motion in a second. Deputy Mayor Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz?
Aye.
Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have Councilman Corey, discussion regarding Senate Bill one eighty and potential revisions to the City of Benita Springs code ordinance, twenty-four flood hazard reduction, and provide direction to staff. Councilman Corey?
Senate Bill one eighty, uh, limits the abilities of cities to, uh, make more difficult the recovery of, uh, damages from hurricanes. And in one particular case, it's, uh, it's important to take a look at the five-year look-back provision that the city has in its ordinance, in, in terms of, uh, complying with FEMA rules. And Senate Bill one eighty is passed and signed by the governor, eliminates those look-back provisions. What's been reported to me, uh, and others, is that, uh, the look-back provision is, uh, harming sales in Benita Springs of properties that people want to sell, because, you know, while we have the governors signing the bill, people and their advisors and realtors are saying, well, wait a minute, there's still a look-back provision within the ordinances of, uh, Benita Springs. And so, the realtors would like us to clean that up by, uh, taking that out of our current ordinances. So, what I will be circulating for the next meeting is a proposed ordinance amendment that would, uh, drop the entire five years, uh, out of our ordinances, so that it's a permanent change. And also a resolution that, uh, that until such time as that ordinance is, uh, passed, that we would not be enforcing that five-year look-back, should we have another hurricane this season. Uh, this is not a FEMA requirement, this is a way that, uh, cities, uh, uh, forced homeowners to deal with recoveries instead of breaking renovation projects down, uh, into small pieces in order to get around some sort of a recovery limit. They forced them into this five-year, but we're one of the last cities in Benita Springs to have adopted this. I mean, Lee County itself went to zero, uh, other cities have gone to one year. We don't need the five-year, we need to be able to, to allow our citizens to, uh, move properties. I mean, just, if, if somebody wants to sell a house that they redone the kitchen in, and, uh, last year, or redone the windows and so forth, uh, we don't need the buyer to say, well, wait a minute, since you did all that work on this property, that, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna count that against. So, it just cleans it up, we couldn't enforce the, the thing anyway. So, I will be circulating a resolution and, and ordinance amendment for the next meeting. I'll be giving that to the, to staff and, uh, the city clerk.
Jim?
Uh, yeah, I have a variety of questions you, thank you for bringing up, uh, Senate Bill one eighty, because clearly, in addition to this item, there's a variety of other things that do potentially have impact to how we run the city. But first of all, I do want to clarify the statement made, of course, is that there is no, I repeat, no requirement by FEMA on a five-year look-back in terms of impacting our rating for flood insurance.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Two, um, since the effective date, um, was six twenty-five or six twenty-six of this year, my assumption is, is that, that is, that our ordinance is not being, um, a roadblock to, um, building permits and so forth. Is, can someone just clarify and correct that?
There she is.
And may I clarify one other thing? It is, is not in the FEMA requirement, but it is a part of the CRS application that we provide for the discount. So, there is a bene, there has been, uh, score points benefit, and that is previously why it was in. And it was also, at the same time, it was the exact mirrored ordinance as Lee County, until post-Ian.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, good morning, council. Ayda Lonergan, floodplain manager for the City of Benita Springs. The Senate Bill one eighty, um, target is, targets and addresses substantial improvement. The important note of that is that when we talk about the fifty percent rule, there are two different levels for the fifty percent rule, one being substantial damage. Senate Bill one eighty actually doesn't address substantial damage. That is still unchanged, as it is minimum national requirements for the flood insurance program. What that first level is, is the total sum of all repairs required to restore a building back to its pre-damaged condition after a damaging event. Now, that damaging event may be hurricane, fire, floods, your neighbor driving through your house, any damaging event. What Senate Bill one eighty addresses is substantial improvement. What Senate Bill 180 addresses is substantial improvement, anything else under than a damaging event. And that does regulate and state currently that there shall no longer be a lookback policy across the state of Florida. When we, we actually started anticipating these modifications after Hurricane Irma. After Hurricane Irma, the city made modifications to its flood ordinance at that time, accounting for the difference that we could potentially lose for that point spread in the CRS program. A five-year cumulative community received a 20 points in the CRS audits. We covered that point spread by incorporating a non-conversion agreement on elevated homes. At that time, we're 30 points. So we had been planning for this over several years. We are not enforcing a lookback policy at this time for compliance with SB 180. When we have modifications for the flood ordinance, we are required to have that, it's a very particular lengthy process through the state's flood office, who runs interference between local municipalities and the local FEMA region office. So we have been preparing drafts in anticipation of this for several months in case that the bill was signed. We are working through that process, but again, we are limited in how quickly we can bring this to you as the Florida, Florida Department of Emergency Management Floodplain Office is still negotiating with the FEMA regional offices on how to meet the legal requirements for both Florida and the national set of standards so we do not have complications by making rash decisions.
So to clarify, the legalese is that essentially the way our ordinance is today provides us good points with FEMA in our score for the rate reduction on flood insurance, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It also provides provision saying that if there's other statute changes, that we can apply those statute changes while we work on the process because it has to be vetted through the state's office first.
So I'll say a little bit in English here, too. The, and, and Aida will correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the substantial damage is substantial improvement, they're, they're, they're part of two different regimes. There's the FEMA provision, that's why there's a lot of focus on the substantial damage because it's relating to a storm. The substantial improvement is, is also tied heavily to Florida building code. So that's just, that's just to say, hey, look, you're improving this house to 50% of its value, you know, you're essentially coming, building a new house, but you're not bringing it up to code. So you might be able to keep a 1950s wiring system that could be a danger, but you've replaced every other element of the house. So the Flor, the state of Florida has control over those substantial improvement in the Florida building code, they can make those changes. I think what, what Aida may be trying to relay as well is that we have points and these points are cumulative and they add up and that means we can make changes even if it goes against the current FEMA guidance and still, you know, have a buffer with our, with our CRS rating. The state of Florida is nonetheless going through discussions with FEMA to make sure that they're, that this is not affecting anyone statewide.
My biggest concern is clearly we are not enforcing our ordinance today. Two, if I understand correctly, any change that we make to this has to be reported to FEMA in its process of point scoring. So my real concern is if we go ahead and do this and remove this ordinance, is does this put at risk our current rate reduction benefit that we receive from FEMA for flood insurance for those non-compliant properties?
We do not anticipate a negative impact. I want to clarify, too, is that there's a lot of confusion now between the discussions that will happen between the state and the federal government on this issue. I have been in communication with Lee County staff, they are working with their legislative folks as well, their lobbyists, to try to get some insight, their federal lobbyists as well as their, as well as their state lobbyists and trying to work through the negotiations that will happen there. Because we don't, as, as clear, any revision to the, to the floodplain ordinance has to be submitted to the state floodplain coordinator prior to adoption of council. And that is then sent to FEMA. If you recall, we received confirmation from FEMA Regional Office in August of 2022 for complete approval of our flood ordinance. Lee County did make some revisions about two months after, which is the lookback issue, and FEMA became involved, completely involved. And we received emails as well during that time with the misunderstanding that our ordinance reflected Lee County's, which it did not. So it, it does go, it does trigger other reviews processes as well.
I, I think, again, my primary concern is not necessarily whether we keep or get rid of this, my concern is essentially how we're rated with FEMA and how our, our discount on flood insurance is protected to our residents, that's my primary concern. And I don't want to jeopardize that rating that we've worked so hard for the past couple of years to go ahead and obtain because our staff's done a great job that way. The last thing is, is you, Chris, is that you prompted a review of the other items of 180. And in that is what, something that kind of scares the heck out of me a little bit is the limitations that have been placed on amendments to future land use restrictions and limitations to amendments to the comp plan. And I, that's real fuzzy in the documentation that I have found on that. And I would ask that prior to going into our August 6th Comprehensive Plan workshop, that there is, at the start of that, that there's a summary of the potential impacts as to decisions that we may make regarding any amendments to future land use under the Comprehensive Plan.
I'm actually going to give Mayor Gibson a chance to comment because I, I left him out of the last one and I shouldn't have done that, that was my bad. I hope, I hope I didn't leave you out of the last one, you were trying to get in, Mike, but you don't, you're not on the speaker list, you don't have a little thing here, so I didn't see it. So my apologies, do you have any commentary on this specific item we're talking about right now?
Yeah, no worries. Yeah, I spoke with John Dolmer previously about this and they already have a draft on taking out the five-year lookback and it should comply with keeping us in, for our community rating and all that. So I, I believe it's all in the works. I think, you know, Derek might even already have the copy to look at, to hear back from him, but I, I've, I've heard that we're working on it and I, I think it's, I think it's coming. But I'm totally in support with removing the five years, so, thank you.
So what I, what I would say, I want to add one other element, because Senate, Senate Bill 180 makes statewide restrictions that already applied to us as a result of the two iterations of Senate Bill 250 because we were in the, the zone of 100 miles from Hurricane Ian. So any new restrictive policies, and this could have been applied, this, depending on how it's interpreted, could have been already applied to our existing floodplain controls. The, the issue really is, all those ordinances or any ordinances that are in conflict are void under the statute. So there's no need for us to take any action or to necessarily prematurely trigger any review by FEMA. Now, we did see during the last iteration of the, of the issues with FEMA that they were not concerning themselves with the obligations the state put on us. So if the state said, you don't do this, we'd still get punished, that, that's, that's a possibility, but there's no reason necessarily for us to break into jail and send a notice that we're not, you know, doing any, or changing an ordinance that they had previously approved when that ordinance under Florida law may be completely voided. Now, these ordinances and the restrictions extended by Senate Bill 180 push out till 2028. So a lot of communities statewide are trying to deal with this. They're trying to figure out, all right, do we need to go and void, are, are any regulations we adopted pre Ian because there's a effective date that rolls back? Many of them are adopting vested rights programs that say that, okay, you have an issue comes in, even under Senate Bill 180, you have to identify that you've been affected by a regulation and there's an opportunity for us to grant relief. So what I have not seen, I've only seen one community do it, and that's the city of Punahora, repeal their codes to go back to some earlier iteration because these things can be addressed on a case-by-case basis, you know, does this affect or does not? If we're not enforcing it, technically, we're not in violation of, of code. For purposes of how that translates into the public, that's probably something that we need to have a conversation with local board of realtors and others because as we've seen in the past, when there's discussions about flood insurance, it, it, it spreads like wildfire and it affects, it affects sellers, it affects buyers, it, it creates a panic. And so the issue may be, you know, oh, we, let's go ahead and adopt a change, we can, we can, we can absolutely repeal the ordinance. I don't know that that alone will change the effect in the market. So I think one thing we do have to do is we have to find out who's, who's being affected in the market and get them information.
My understanding that the Board of Realtors of Estero and Benita Springs had written a letter to the, to the city that was last week.
I got a, no, I have received a draft.
From me?
From you, but I've not received a letter.
Okay.
I haven't either.
I haven't either and I talk to them regularly, I'm surprised. But that said, I'm not, I think the, I think the spirit of where you're going is the right thing. I would say with the states and the feds being so, playing the game they are right now, figuring out how this is actually going to work, I think like a 60-day stay on this for us might be the most prudent move just so we can see how it pans out. Because I, I just don't want to take steps that then we're going to end up inevitably causing us more work because of how they reshuffle the deck between the states and the feds and they do that regularly. So if it's, if it is currently in a status that we are not losing any points and we're not getting ourselves in any situation and we stay for 60 days and then we can see how this actually is going to shake out, we might be in a better position to appropriately move.
And that sounds what Derek is saying.
Nigel I didn't see on the speaker list, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. Aida, there's something that bugged me particularly when we looked at improvements that were included in the lookback, one of the things was painting. Is that being addressed on a state level because that still makes no sense to me whatsoever?
So the addressing of painting is actually part of the national program, but there, again, is a distinction between work done during a blue skies day or recovery. So blue skies day, you were bored and you just decide for a fresh coat of paint, that is a different conversation. Just to repaint your bedroom or your living room, there's no permit requirement for that. However, if you are taking, if it's transpiring during a larger project such as remodeling, that you're moving walls, you're renovating the kitchen and you're painting at that time, it becomes the total sum of all work. And that again is under the federal set of requirements for what counts versus what does not.
Still disagree with it.
We, code has no personal opinion, but we do make sure that we follow policy to a T. I will share with you, it is a federal policy, it was one of the things they captured in the review when we were doing the individual packets and they, because it was time and materials as well added on to the cost, so especially owner builder.
I just, just like to say, one of the ways that, one of the things I'm going to introduce at the next meeting on the agenda, because we have to notice resolutions, is that we would simply have a resolution that would be, that would be a public statement as to the fact we're not going to enforce this until such time as we get around to being able to figure out how to amend the ordinance. So, you know, perhaps that will, that will.
We are, yeah, we are in constant communication with the state's office as liaison to FEMA. Our last update from them was this morning around 8:46 advising that they have been in constant communication with the FEMA office and anticipate having additional guidance documents available soon. Just all of their legal teams individually are verifying that for an agreed path before they disseminate the information.
Do you have a ballpark thought on when that might be, are we talking 30, 60 days and, or are we talking next week?
So, so I want to be clear, the, the effect of Senate Bill 250 already blocks the implementation of this until 2027, under that bill's extension. Now, Senate Bill 180 extends it even further because very clearly it's retroactive to before Ian and it also affects rebuilding and reconstruction of homes. So it's already in place. Now, what we could do is possibly adopt a resolution indicating that the city will is, will abide by Senate Bill 250, Senate Bill 180's implementation, the effects with respect to local land development regulations and that, you know, if there's any aggrieved parties, that there's a process to, to address it. That way, we don't necessarily have to go in and change any of our code, which would take three months to go through the process of changing the code, going through repeals and amendments, but would allow people to say, hey, look, the city's adopted a process that this is not going to affect us and it's a formal adoption.
Common sense.
So you don't need a motion, we have direct.
If you have, if, if that, it looks like the consensus and, and I can feel the mayor nodding through, through the electromagnetic waves, we can, I can work with staff to try and get a, get a resolution on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Moving right along, city attorney items. We are on 11A, approving a resolution relating to the state and local emergency resolution for impacts from Hurricane Ian Helen Milton extending demolition delay relief and providing an effective date.
Absolutely, so back to, to moving forward, just to give, this is for the members of the public, this is, the issue is, we, we have a, if your home is over a certain age, there's a automatic demolition delay, well, that gets reviewed. Obviously, there are a lot of homes that were affected by Hurricane Ian, we no longer have our state of emergency as a result of Hurricane Ian. However, during that state of emergency, we suspended the demolition delay because obviously a lot of people waited for insurance, code enforcement, a lot of reasons why we removed that delay period. This will not affect historical properties, but what we're doing is we're now tying, tying this demolition delay to all of the hurricanes the last couple of seasons and it'll be in effect until our states of emergency for Milton and Helene expires well.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Up to come.
As it, define historical property, please, Derek.
That's why Mike's here.
I can clear, the ordinance is 50 years or older and there is a demolition delay. Whether it has been determined by the historical board or not, the preservation board or not, the demolition delay is the 50 days, correct?
Correct, so the, the city maintains two separate lists. You have your list of officially designated properties and resources. I think that list is, I think we have 21 properties on that specific list. This does not apply to those properties. The city maintains a separate list of properties that are 50 years or older, which that was the number that was thrown out and agreed upon, that there may be some historic significance going forward because of the age of those structures. So they're not designated, it's just something that because of the age, there may be something significant, but the research really hasn't been done to make that determination. So what happens is, let's say one of those properties were to come in for a demolition permit, a, a notice would go out saying that there's a delay in the issuance of the permit so that we can do that analysis to determine if there's some historical significance to the property. If there is, a discussion could take place about whether or not they want to designate, receive grant funding, so on and so forth. They are under no obligation to do any of that, but that's the purpose of the delay is to allow those conversations to take place. What we have found significantly since we got inundated with these storms is that with a lot of these properties, any historic significance that would have been contemplated isn't there anymore. Significant water damage, structural damage, things like that. But the, the way the ordinance is written is there isn't an out for those properties that say, well, the delay's there unless it's storm damage and then you can go ahead and, and go forward with this. So that's what this does, it makes it easier for the property owners that have these damaged properties where there is no historic significance to go ahead and get their demolition permits without having to wait 90 days.
So I guess the thing we'd all like to know is how many structures that are residential in the city of Benita Springs approximately, Mike, would be affected by that 50 years or older?
So the last time the list was updated, I believe, was either 2018 or 2019. At that time, there were several thousand properties on the list that the historical preservation board went through and kind of tried to whittle out some of the ones that they didn't feel had significance. I think as the list stands right now, it's still pretty close to 1,000 properties.
Seriously. Okay. Anybody else? I had a motion, I believe, to approve, do I have a second?
There was a second. Councilman Carr seconded?
I made it.
She made the motion.
I made the motion.
I'll second. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pardon. Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, Derek?
All right, the next item is, this is addressing the San Carlos Estates bill that was passed, not last session, our last session, indicating that there would be two separate votes, one by the residents in the San Carlos Estates Water Control District and then by by the residents in the San Carlos Estates Water Control District, and then by the city of Benita Springs. If that first vote was successful, to make the San Carlos Estates Water Control District a dependent district of the city. As a landowner within the district, the city owns several parcels within the district, we received the voting proxy request from the control district's board of directors. This would ask us to grant authority to the, the board to take action on their, on, on our behalf to vote either in favor or against the proposition provided by the bill, looking for direction from the council.
Say that again, they're looking.
So the, the way, so the, yes, the way that, the way that, unlike a, like a community development district where they go, there's a standard election process, they, they work with Tommy's office to, to hold an election. They hand, their elections are based on what district control law is, which essentially says that based on certain amounts of acreage ownership within a district, different properties get different amounts of votes. Those voters can authorize through a proxy vote to allow the board of governors of that district to take whatever action is. Or those members would have to show up to the meeting in which the vote occurs. So the vote for whether or not to become a dependent district will occur at a board of directors meeting, and it will be composed of either the members of the district who attend the meeting, or those members who have signed proxy votes. Those votes will be given to the board, which will then vote the way we vote here at a council every day. Will not, they're not individual votes, nor is there a direction given on each proxy. So you're essentially yielding your vote because you cannot attend the meeting to the board to make that decision for you.
I'm okay with yielding the vote if this is, if we're still sure that they don't want us in charge. Because I don't want to give them the vote, and then they're like, just kidding, you guys can have us, because I don't think any of us want them.
There, there's no obligation by the city to respond to this at all. However, staff, we didn't know how to respond.
So it's scheduled for the 23rd of August. Where and what time?
Uh, wherever they hold their standard district.
And anyone can attend?
Anyone can attend, but only members of the district can vote. And so if you actually wanted the city to send someone, we would, you would need to.
I mean, if we send somebody, we're sending to say that we don't want you guys. In my opinion, not to be rude about it, but just being honest, I think if we send anybody, hey, we're very supportive of your guys' autonomy, we'd like to continue being partners with you, and as far as the city's concerned, you guys are doing fine, and we're doing fine as is. That, that's what I think our stance should be, in my opinion. Because we don't need that, we have enough going on.
Can you clarify, Jesse? Is that, and I guess my fundamental question is, what is, what if we don't vote? I mean, I think my, my thing says it's left to those non-city landowners to make their decision. And if we just don't vote our five or six votes, or whatever the heck we have, that, that leaves it to them to make their decision, and we're out of this fight.
Possibly. Jamie?
Yeah, just to speak a little bit on this, each owner, property owner received a letter, so, in which the city did too as property owners. It's just very disappointing for a property owner, as myself, receiving a letter from the board of directors with so much misinformation contained in the letter. But with that being said, I feel strongly that there's, as we've heard from a lot out there, they don't want the city. But I have heard some that would like the city to take this over. So I feel that we, as council, should step back and leave it up to the residents to make that decision.
Do we need a motion of that?
We just don't take no action.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think that makes sense.
And just leave it up to the residents.
And then hopefully they just don't.
This, you know, the city hasn't taken an official position on this issue at all. We didn't ask for the bill. We haven't, so unless, unless the council wishes to take a position on it, I'd just say.
I think we have taken a position on it, but I would still like to know the time and, and location. And I will be very quiet.
It's on August 23rd.
It's August 23rd at 9:00 AM, I believe.
Sorry, we're going to take a three-minute restroom break. Three-minute restroom break, thanks. Are the microwave, are the microwaves live?
Yep, they're live.
The microwave's live, all right. All right, we're going to jump back into the city manager items. Arlene is going to kick us off with the May financial report and discussion.
Thank you. I'll ask our finance director to come forward. We do have a brief presentation for you, and we would like to go over the new numbers that we received from the property appraiser's office as well as the July 1 date.
Good morning again. We wanted today to combine our regular recurring monthly financial report with our budget discussions that we have with some new data. As you all recall, each year between now and September, we will bring you updates of data. We continue to receive updated estimates both from the property appraiser and from the state for our revenues as we move forward. So we start out this report with our general fund revenue, our regular recurring revenue. What we do is we compare you current fiscal year-to-date with the prior fiscal year-to-date, which will enable us to identify any collection trends. We look for those to make sure that they're in line with what we have budgeted, and so far, we are, we are seeing that. We will call to your attention that we do continue to see a decrease in half-cent sales tax from the prior year. Again, our state did budget a decrease, but we'll watch that to see what happens. A lot of our revenue collected is, varies differently in different periods of time of the year. So it's not necessarily the same each month. Some are months, some of these revenues will collect more than they do in other months of the year. General fund operating expenditures, again, current fiscal year-to-date as compared to the prior fiscal year-to-date by major functional category according to Florida State Chart of Accounts. We are continuing to see a little increase in these items, which was budgeted and anticipated. Restricted revenues. These are revenues that are restricted to use. We again compare current fiscal year-to-date to prior fiscal year-to-date. The first item, we do want to point out, that's our downtown revenue sharing agreement. Whereas this year, we haven't collected anything. Last year, last year, we maxed out that agreement, so we were not anticipating to collect anymore. That was our partnership for our downtown redevelopment contract that we had with Lee County, partnering with them. They contributed some funds to this, as well as the city contributing those. So those monies are sitting there and paying off the debt service that funded that downtown capital project. Building permit fees, pleased to see that they are exceeding the prior year. As we've talked about, the permitting has had some dampening statewide in our local area, and we're watching that with community development staffing. The other items there appear to be relatively in line. Road impact fees, a little down from prior year. It should be stressed that road impact fees and building permit fees are very difficult to predict. You know what the industry's doing, but it's when someone is ready to draw a building permit and actually start constructing a unit, that's when those are paid. So the timing of those vary widely based upon development of certain projects, timing of the market, and things of that nature. Cash balances. We show you cash balances for all of our major fund types, for the current year-to-date, and then the immediately to preceding fiscal years, and this allows us to see collection trends. Most of the monies that you see here are designated and populated in your capital improvement program. We try to, to fund capital improvement projects with the pay-as-you-go, so we collect these funds, and then we populate them and prioritize them in your capital improvement program that we, we review throughout the year. This is a continuation of our cash balances, some of our restricted funds or park impact fees, you can see those. The last data set here, funds reserved for that debt, that is the $2 million disaster loan that the state gave us, that we are sitting, it's in the bank, available to us to use to help us with reserve needs in the event of a significant incident should occur. And then also the money that we've accumulated for our downtown redevelopment debt. So that's in the bank waiting for those debt service payments. Now to our budget discussions. We are here today to have our preliminary millage rate vote and our stormwater utility fee vote. As we've talked about, our Florida statute lays out a timeline which we must comply with, so today is the day that we need to make these votes. And then at our next two meetings in August, we will have budget updates such as we're doing today. We'll bring you up any new data that changes, any forecast changes, or anything of that nature that impacts your budget forecast. September 3rd, that will be a 5:30 PM meeting in compliance with Florida statutes. That is our tentative budget hearing, and that will include a millage rate vote. Each fiscal year, we have three millage rate votes. Today will be your first. Today, the vote that you have will be what's reflected in the trim notice that's mailed out to each property owner in Benita. September 3rd will be the second of three millage rate votes, and then September 17th will be our final budget hearing, and that will be our final millage rate vote. Strategic priorities. The budget that you have before you, it was presented to you at our last meeting, it is, been adopted and proposed to you in line with these strategic priorities which we recently updated. Ad valorem revenue, real estate taxable value. According to Florida statutes, our Lee County property appraiser, June 1, they issue a preliminary, excuse me, an estimated value for us, and then they refine that on July 1. So July 1, we receive new numbers. If you'll recall, these numbers are higher than what we received June 1. Now, we did have a discussion with the property appraiser's office. This is common in the process, they start out June 1 with an estimate, and then they fine-tune it for July 1. And it does change more as they move through the fiscal year, but specifically what the property appraiser identified with us on these moves, because these were not as what we would have anticipated, because from June 1 to July 1, it increased. Everyone, every taxing entity in Lee County that you see presented here increased. That was specifically, according to the property appraiser, a result of calamity remediation continuing. As you can see, look at the increases in Santibel and Fort Myers Beach, those were the ones that were hit. They're saying, the property appraiser's office is saying they're continuing to get new data about those condos coming back online, and some of those residents coming back online. And those are really the significant movement in some of these entities, and it contributed to ours as well, and then new construction and sales. So, and we did, we did want to stress here that this, these values are as of January 1, 2025. Again, that's a requirement of Florida statutes. So if you're reading in the paper about recent trends or some negative market conditions with respect to real estate, these are not reflected here by Florida law. So now when we get to January 2026, whatever those market conditions are there, that will impact what our numbers are next year. But did want to make sure that we, we outline that to you. This is a graphic depiction of our taxable property values citywide. This is a graphic depiction of our taxable property values citywide. And then, the taxable values downtown, yes, of course.
So, you're saying that property values are gonna be going up when we send out the trim notice, 6.21%?
The taxable values, and this, and we keep, one good thing to keep in mind, this is citywide, and all these entities, these are countywide. So, each property may move differently within Benita. So, it's very, very, in fact, the property appraiser doesn't release that data until the trim notices go out in August. So, in August, you could look on your portal and see, that property appraiser portal, and see how each individual parcel moved. And each tax of property owner, excuse me, will get their statement saying how their taxable value moved and their just value. We're gonna get that in a little bit. The just value, you recall, is the value that more closely mirrors the market value. Taxable value has a lot of exemptions in it, you know, Save Our Homes exemptions, there's other exemptions for senior exemptions and things of that nature, so they're in there.
Nigel has a question also.
Yes.
Yeah, Lisa, you and I, I just wanna put this out there. These numbers, guys, that you're looking at on there, Cape Coral would be the number that jumps out at me, 7.4%. When that number comes in next year, they've got a glut of properties up there on the market for sale, they're not moving. People are dropping their home prices 20, 30%, and still not getting movement. So, I mean, I understand how Matt does it, but this is not what we can count on for next year. Benita Springs is in a little bit better shape, but we still have a little over 19,000 homes on the market between the two counties, and they're not moving. So, I think when you look at this and say, oh, well, then we can count on revenues coming in, no, we can't.
But the bottom, so the bottom doesn't fall out on paper till next year?
Correct.
Alright, I just wanna make sure we're tracking.
We're gonna tax them, but we can count on those taxes staying there.
So, this slide here, this is the ad valorem revenue, real estate taxes, and this is the just value. By Florida statute, this is the value that the property appraiser uses that most closely aligns, the movement of it most closely aligns with market value. So, as you can see, this is a much different picture than the taxable value. We received negative movement in our just value, but you can see what the property appraiser staff was talking about with respect to calamity remediation. Look at the increases here in Sanibel and Fort Myers Beach. Those were those properties, and they mentioned specifically condos, but I'm sure there are other properties coming back on the tax rolls, January 2025, or being approved on the tax rolls if they were on there before with their land. So, positive movements for those entities, but definitely something we know we need to watch. We all read every day what's happening in the real estate market, and we watch that, and we talk about it all the time here, and prepare for it. This is a graph of the just value citywide, again, most closely aligned with market values, you can see the decrease this year. This is the allocation of the real estate tax bill, the trim notices that we were talking about, truth in millage. I hate to use an acronym without telling everybody what that means, that's in Florida statutes. The truth in millage statement that comes out to each property owner in Benita and statewide, this is the allocation of the tax bill. As you can see, Benita Springs is roughly 6% of the real estate tax bill. And that's with respect to the distribution of the taxes collected to the various entities, taxing entities.
Is that other four, sorry, is that 4%, is that BSU, or what is, what is the 4% for the other independent districts?
That is mosquito-controlled, hyacinth, and actually southwest.
West Coast Inland.
Thank you, yes, thank you, yes. They have, they have three different line items on there as well, so. Yes.
Ok, Obi Basin.
Yes, exactly, thank you, thank you very much.
He's cheating, he's got his trim bill.
I knew I could count on someone to bring homework, yeah.
Remind everyone, we only get six cents on the dollar.
Okay, and we prepare this for you all each year to give you an idea of the impact on individual homeowners. This is a real estate tax projection. This is based, as it's noted there, based on our Save Our Homes qualified residence. It increases, those increase by, by Florida law, each year, the greater of 3% are market value growth. So, when we talk about the difference between just value, market value, and taxable value, this is one of the biggest reasons. Because they're capped in Save Our Homes property during times of economic boom and the real estate taxes growing, excuse me, tax values growing, they're capped at 3%. So, when our taxable value now, if it goes down, they'll still go up 3%. And it's actually, they're just recapturing some of the market growth that they were, had an exemption from with the Save Our Homes.
So, to clarify, and just from an uneducated standpoint, our taxable values are good as gold in terms of future revenue and stuff like that, until such time as the property is sold?
Well, unless the property value, now, we've seen this before, when the property value, at least only once in my 20-plus years, but if the property value, the sales value, market value falls below the taxable value, it gets reset.
So, a $400,000 condo today, that ultimately gets sold for $320,000, that, that, they would, they would be taxed on 320?
Sales, sales automatically reset, so yes, exactly. But then, if the market value, if that property was on the market, if it, say, the taxable value was $300,000, and if that taxable value failed to 275, the market value, rather, the taxable value will go down. You can't be taxed for more than your property is valued at on the market. So, that's, that, that triggers it as well, and that's on a per-property basis. So, when we talk about the property appraiser, what a Herculean task they have every year for all the parcels and every, every property appraiser in the state. But they have to look at all that sales data, look at all that market data, and basically kind of set a value, set a value for each parcel, which is quite, quite challenging.
So, is our biggest risk on the current taxable value, or is it gonna be on the market value of, as some of these depressed long-term sale things go down?
We're exposed to both, as is every other entity in the state, you know. They both move, and that's, they both move differently, so different things would trigger it, the sales would trigger it, and the market.
I just wanna clarify the difference between the two.
Yes, and if people are selling their property quite frequently, and they're selling at a lower value, that will impact us, yes. You'll see it impacted our taxable value and the just value. So, what we have here is our real estate tax projection. Again, we're attempting to show everyone what the taxes would have been paid in 2024, given the tax rate stated here, which was last year's tax rate. And then, the 20, projection for 2025 tax rate, given the rate that's in the budget draft, which is last year's tax rate. So, you can see the difference there, what we tried to do was identify properties in different value, market values, if you will, and letting you know the impacts, potential impacts in the taxable rate. And that is all that we have prepared for you today, but we're available for any discussions, and we look for direction.
Thank you, Lisa. Alright, thank you. Next, we will do, we're going to adopt the proposed millage rates through the year 25, 26, Arlene?
Thank you, as you can see, the, from the brother budget presentation, we have prepared a fully funded budget based on last year's values. So, we will look for your direction, is how you'd like to set this, and this is the rate that will be sent to each property owner within the city through their trim notice.
Pleasure of the council to start off conversation.
Well, I know we always go, like, go to the highs just in case, but I'm happy keeping it just as is, and that's how I will vote. So, you guys can decide how you wanna present it, but I'm comfortable with keeping it the same.
Jim?
I have two budgetary questions and clarification. Is, is under the current matching to the 847 mills? That leaves and protects the increase from last year for the storm, for the resiliency and all that other type stuff, the stormwater refunding and reserves.
That's next, that's next.
That's separate and distinct.
To clarify, yes, that we have, you, you.
I thought stormwater was a separate.
It is, the, the, will be the stormwater assessment that will have to be voted on separately after this one.
Can we clarify the stormwater assessment, is that the $50 fee per household? I'm talking about, we added last, last year, incremental reserve last year was added, which impacted, I believe, about an incremental $300,000.
Correct, no, that is in the CIP budget and is accounted for in the, in the, in the budget we've presented to you. That's a separate item, what you're referring to is, is we started to, each fiscal year, out through the 10-year process, identified, I believe it's 400,000. 400,000 each, and that is funded in the current CIP. So, in the proposed budget we provided to you, that is, that is funded.
And, being an unelected official at the time when this was discussed last year, council had the discussion that this was the first step to go ahead and building our reserves, and the discussion is, we need to revisit this, do we need to? Because there was a, this was a middle point that was reached by council last year, last year.
No, it, the stormwater fee was.
No, I'm not talking about stormwater fee, I'm talking about the reserve.
Oh, the reserve.
Talking specifically to the $400,000 reserve that was predicated the increase of the millage last year. If I, if I, if I'm, if I'm wrong, let me know. And the discussion that went with that, that was provided by both Councilman Quarry and Councilman Pollock, centered around the discussion that we need to revisit this each year, because clearly, $400,000 here was not going to go ahead and make up that gap if we get hit by another Ian or Irma. And I guess that, I just wanna clarify that we're locked in for the current $400,000 incremental reserve. I just put out there, do we wanna give consideration to the discussion that you had a year ago about kicking that up a notch? The second question is, in March, we'll have the, the decision made on, on the Rails to Trails project and incurring debt. And I'm just curious as to what amount of debt do we have to worry about financing in terms of interest rates, and is that included in the budget for clarification purposes?
And just to clarify, I wanna confirm that strengthening cities finances, strategic, the fifth strategic priority, account number 300005254901 is disaster reserve allocation, and it is funded at 400,000 in all of the carryout years for a total of, for a 10-year total of 2 million.
Well, that, that addresses the number that, in theory, 10 years is the next disaster. The question is, what if the disaster is in four years? Are we sufficiently in a position to take care of the issues that's tied to a storm in the event? You know, it's, it's great to have 1.6 million, and not knowing where FEMA's gonna give us money, in light of the current discussion today, I just, I just have concern about our resiliency in a storm situation. So, anyway, the second part of that question.
Yes, as council has already voted to have a line of credit. The line of credit annual debt service of approximately 20,000 is in this budget and fully funded in this budget.
For the next budget year?
In, yes, starting in September.
In the out years, it goes to 900,000, if I recall?
Well, if and when the council takes action to incur any additional debt at that point, it then gets incorporated in the budget, if I understood your question.
So, that, that part of it is not incorporated, it's just the.
Line of credit.
The line of credit debt service for the fiscal year.
And there, as we talked about, we, when we presented that option to you all, there's an annual recurring cost for that available debt service, so that's what we have in the budget.
Arlene, didn't we increase, I think it was Nigel, a million dollars into our reserve fund?
400,000.
That, no, that's a separate reserve fund, so, so there is a hurricane reserve fund. And then, there is the four months of reoccurring expenses into reserves, and that's a slide that Lisa's had before that she showed you. We did previously increase that by 1 million more, she only had 1 million for Hurricane, we went to 2 million, that was a few years ago. And then, as she presented, the operating budget has, by, that's designated by your charter, has increased because the overall budget has increased. So, we are in compliance with the charter that way as well. Separate upon that, you voted to create a CIP item for disaster reserve allocation, and that is where that 400,000 a year is placed.
Right. If I, Lisa, if you could, when we were talking about this last year, the
No, no.
impact to the homeowner is on the slide, that's, it's not there anymore, but I think you showed that based on four different property values, what that is going to be in addition, I think it was 8, 12, 15, and maybe 20 bucks a year?
We can get it back up on the.
That would be great.
I think I can. Please someone will show up.
The thing I know what Jim's saying is, I don't disagree, and Chris, we don't have enough reserves, and it's not the Russian roulette, but I think we'd all feel a lot better. Chris, if I remember last year, you said that the auditors statewide, that for a city our size, we need somewhere in the neighborhood 12 million? And we have currently what, Lisa?
Excuse me?
The auditor report that Chris mentioned last year, that a city of our size should have approximately $12 million in storm, a separate account for impact, storm impact, and right now, we have how much?
Well, I don't recall the discussion about the 12 million.
No, it was a, it was a public auditors, independent?
Yeah.
Okay. We have, in your budget, we have 5.6, excuse me, 5.4 million in operating reserves. That is a, as, as Arlene spoke to, that is a component of four months of your last two fiscal years' actual expenditures. So, it's meant to help you, if you, don't mind me saying, pay bills in the instant, there's something happens, you have revenue interruption, things of that nature, you need to continue operating and doing business. And then, your disaster reserve, right now, it's at 1.1, because FEMA's does still owe us some money, but in addition to that, we have the 2 million that the state has so graciously lent us. So, our disaster reserves right now, excuse me, in your next budget, are 3.1 million. And in addition, that's in addition to the 5.4, so you have those two funds available for you, projected to be available.
So, you're saying, basically, we've got about 8, 8.5 million total, so we're about 4 million shy? But not, not from what your projections were, but what the Florida's.
Municipal Finance Officers Association.
It just rolls right off your tongue, Municipal Finance Officers Association, we talked about it last year.
But we're still owed back, so that, we're still owed back some of that, to be, to be clear, FEMA is still reimbursing us on some.
How much are we owed back?
We, I could, I don't have that slide in front of me that we talked about last time, I believe, let me see if I have it here.
Well, it would be the difference of the, of the 2 million.
Yes, yes, let me just look at it to be precise. I believe they still owe us roughly 1.7 million, that's we're hoping to collect.
1.7?
1.7 million.
Makes me feel a little bit better.
Yeah.
And, and keep in mind, we do need to, each entity, each, each governmental entity, their reserve bases should be, it's so individualized. So, depending on your functionality and your operations, your need may be higher or lower. For example, we don't have, in, in our staff, we don't have police and fire that we pay significant, you know, amount to respond, you know, the first responders. So, that changes the complexity of the amount that we need. So, just things like that make it difficult to take the, you know, a number that's presented, you know, significantly. And that's one of the reasons why four, four months of operating is such a good rule of thumb, because that can then be applied to each entity and provide a number that's relative to what they spend and what they feel they need. And that is in addition to our disaster reserves that we have.
So, we can keep the lights on for four months, we have about 6.7 million in the event of something happens. And I guess my magic question is, do we have a ballpark number as to what our expenses above, of and beyond, keeping the lights on? That we incurred for Hurricane Ian?
Yes, as a matter of fact, last, and I should have brought my slide deck from last time, I apologize about that, I didn't anticipate these questions. But, as we talked about last time, we're looking each year in compliance with Florida statutes and our FROC program, the Florida Resiliency Program that we're in. We look each year, and we did last meeting, at what our historic costs have been for major storms. We looked at Ian, let me get to that slide, luckily, thank goodness, I have them here with us. So, I think, let's see, where was Ian? Okay, yes, so Ian costs the city to date, because we are still rebuilding some things, 9.7 million. So, what we were looking at, at our last meeting, with respect to disaster reserves and their sufficiency in our compliance with Florida statute, was looking at where we are with our 8.5 million that we have and that we're projected to have, and comparing that to the, the 9.7 that I just mentioned. And thinking, you know, I mean, that, those costs are dated by a couple of years, but Ian is the biggest storm we've ever had. So, you, you, we can use that as something we actually incurred, and then take that and kind of move it forward in time with respect to what it may cost, and then magnitude of the storm. We also looked at Irma, Irma was 8.8 roughly million. So, those give us some ideas of what we may have. So those give us some ideas of what we may have up and above.
Okay, so in, in a nutshell, that Ian cost us 9.7, we've got about 6.7 in the, in the, in the, in the bank today. So if we had a, um, major situation like an Ian this year, we'd have a gap of 3 million, we'd be looking for the sources.
Well, we actually have 8, 8.5, 8.5, that would be, if you look on your, your budget book, it's, it was last time, it's 5.4 in operating, and then roughly 3.1 in disaster between what the state has loaned us and the other. So that'd be the 8.5.
Okay.
Well, to clarify this, that's a state loan that we have not, that's available to us, but we have not.
Right.
If we hypothetically got hit with a 100-year storm next year, we are, we have half a million dollars short.
We can use that to keep our lights on, or to do any kind of disaster response that we need, yes, sir. Operating during a response.
All right, so Mayor Gibson, do you have any thoughts on this, sir?
On the military, I, I think we should probably just keep it the same. We can always move down later if need be.
Anybody, uh, do you want to make that as a motion, or does anybody else have anything they want to say on it? Anybody want, do?
I'll make the motion to leave it alone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Laura Carr. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Nope.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson. Mayor Gibson. Motion carries, 6 to 1.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting in English.
All right, approve resolution to establish fiscal year '25, '26 annual stormwater assessment fee. Do I have any?
I'd say keep it the same, that would be my motion.
Do I have a second or discussion?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Nope.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson. Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Motion carries, 6 to 1.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, next, designate councilmember to serve in cities voting delegate 2025. Florida League of Cities Annual Business Meeting to be held in Orlando Saturday, August 16th. My recommendation was for, I, was for Jamie Bogaz to potentially be that person. If there's somebody else who would love to be that person, I am slated to potentially be there, but I have a potential conflict, so I don't want to be cemented into the actual voting slot. But I'm going to try to be there. That said, just to make sure that we are amply covered, somebody who is going to be 100% there would probably be the best person to be the voting member for us. So that's it, unless anybody else is going and would really like to, I.
I'm going and I'm staying through the weekend, but Jamie, you're more than.
My only concern is what, I was leaving the morning of this.
Okay, I'm good with it being Councilwoman Carr. Anybody, you have any objection?
I'll be, I'll be there also.
Oh, well.
Do you want to vote, Mike?
I will be there.
Are you staying through Saturday?
Either, uh, I, I will be, I, I can vote if, if nobody else wants to do it.
Well, I think having our mayor as the voting member.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
All right, so we will, uh.
We do need a motion, it's a requirement.
I move Mayor Gibson to represent us at the city council.
Second.
League of Cities.
And if something happens, Laura Carr be the alternative.
Deal, all right.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next, presentation community development activity reports, Jackie.
Good morning, Council, Jacqueline Ginson. So I am here providing the monthly report on behalf of John. So this is the report that we're required to give you. We do it at the day meeting of your council meeting, so the second meeting of the month. So first of all, in your packet, there was actually two reports. So we had the June monthly report, and then you have the quarterly report, which encompasses April to June. So I'll first go over the monthly, and forgive me as I go through PDF. So the first sheet here just kind of goes over the revenues by year to date. So we have 2022 up until 2025, and this is our hurricane fee waivers. Hurricane fee waivers did end January 31st of this year, but we still have permits that are in process that still have the ability to utilize that fee waiver as part of that, um, program that we had available. So that's just a snapshot of fees that are still being waived for the month to date. Next is our phone calls.
Excuse me, when are we going to end that?
It is currently ended, so any permits that come in as of February 1st of this year are not eligible for fee waivers. Okay. So item B on the slide is our phone calls. So that shows you our incoming calls for April, May, and June. And then it shows you our outgoing calls. And as you can see for incoming, there's a slight reduction in June, but with the outgoing calls, it's pretty much consistent, maybe a little bit higher elevated from your April and May standpoint. For the permitting counter, that's, we go ahead and track when customers come into the office, they go ahead and log in at our computer to get their service. So that shows you our total customers for that three-month period of April, May, and June. So again, not a surprise, we're, we're at a season, but we're still pretty active. So you'll see the total customers coming in is, is slightly down, but that's normal. And then the average wait time, because we don't have as many customers in the lobby, it is much faster. Next, with the building department reports, you'll see the application types that are coming in for the month of June. As to be pretty much expected, our trade permits are the highest volume, because that includes, so your mechanical, so your ACs, um, and other factors, your roof permits, and anything, the trades is always your smaller permits, so we always have a higher volume of those. Overall, with our applications, you can see, again, slightly down the month of May, little uptick in June, but nothing out of the ordinary for, for off-season. Next sheet goes into our building inspections. So again, with the June month, we're slightly down, but again, because of season. And then our next slide over is the building permit revenue. We definitely had an uptick in June, and that's because we had a big permit pickup. I want to say the Bayview Tower 2 was picked up, so that is pretty much where that big revenue jump came from. So that's the big June change. In terms of our building department reviews, um, that goes into showing you, again, the slight downtick in, in May from April, but up again in June. And then we have our building permit review breakdown, which is, is also a little bit, definitely lower in June. With planning and zoning, we have our planner on call service. That's a service we offer to our residents and business owners. They come in, we have a, at least a one business day turnaround, we have, we offer walk-in service. So if a customer comes in and they want to talk to a planner, we have that service available to them. So, um, that's remaining pretty constant from April, a little down in May, but up again in June. So that's the slide there. Next, you'll see the different applications that the planning and zoning department processes. The big one is administrative reviews, so those are pretty constant. And then we have a lot of open records requests, that's where we track that. So a lot of requests for records, whether it be, you know, some site plans or just closing documents, things of that nature, but that's what the ORR is, that's an open records request. And then the PRE case type, that's a pre-application meeting. So what that is, is that it's a complimentary service that we offer to our residents and businesses, is they have the opportunity to request meetings with staff, free of charge, to provide guidance, whether they're doing some due diligence, or they're wanting to apply for a permit. That's, that costs no service to the community. With the planning and zoning applications, those are pretty constant, pretty consistent with the numbers that we're processing. Our planning and zoning reviews, that goes ahead and encapsulates all the reviews that our environmental group is doing, our engineering group is doing, our planning and zoning staff is doing across multiple applications. Then we have our development services applications, that's our engineering group. So they're doing a lot of our site permit reviews, whether it be from a seal coat restrike to someone building, extra building on their property for site infrastructure. And even some FEMA applications for, um, certain requests that require administrative review of, of applications. So we have those. And then just to kind of show again, our, our, the numbers are pretty much consistent with a small drawdown in June for the number of applications that come in. In terms of inspections, for development services inspections, that's our engineering group going out and doing inspections associated with building permits for silt inspections, or periodic inspections for our larger projects, smaller projects, and then the final inspections to make sure that projects were built in accordance with the permits that we reviewed. And then our last slide on the monthly report is the reviews that that staff also does. So that's, again, accounting for our engineers and their reviews on planning, zoning applications, and then those engineering permits. So that's the monthly report. I also have the quarterly report, but that encapsulates the data that you were presenting in April, May, and just now. So I'm happy to go over that if you feel it's necessary, or if you have any questions, I'm happy to ask or answer.
I think we're good, anybody need anything further?
Yeah.
Mayor, council, I just want to clarify, this is part of that performance piece that you've asked for. And it previously, I think what was less transparent is it was just provided to staff. I think by provide, unless I hear differently, I think providing it as a quarterly report to the public and to you all. If there's any other items you would like them to account for or adjust or change, please let myself know, or our Jackie or John know, and we can add that to report so that we're being as transparent as we can with the performance.
Yeah, I think, I think my question is, is that my understanding is we have not done a formal review in modification of our zoning and permitting fees in probably six, seven years. And I think it's now appropriate, based upon the cost of living increases and so forth in our, in our appropriate fees that we're paying for services, that we warrant a presentation as to what area zoning and permitting fees are, to ensure that we're comparable, and to make up some of the gap that currently exists between what we're paying out versus what may be coming in. So that's.
I think it's already in the works.
And when is that, Laura?
Whenever I think we want it, because I think they've got it done.
Is it done?
So we are aware that fees have been a topic of discussion, and we agree that we should revisit and see where we're at in comparison with other jurisdictions. So even as of yesterday, I have been coordinating with, um, actually the city of Fort Myers. And they actually engaged a private firm to go ahead and do some fee analyses. So I'm waiting to go through that data, and then also reach out to other jurisdictions that are also evaluating fees. We were contacted last week by even the Village of Estero to see if we were reevaluating fees. So we do understand there's some other jurisdictions that are also, um, evaluating that topic.
So again, my question is, is that, is there a timeline that would look to present that to council?
It's council's pleasure. We are definitely, believe it's appropriate to have those discussions.
Could you give us a, not a drop dead date, but?
How about the next 60 days, could you do that in the next 60 days?
I think that is very realistic.
And, and if I can interrupt from the speakers, um, we've got a land use workshop coming up. It may be appropriate to take any input that comes out of that land use workshop and incorporate that into a presentation. So maybe we look at providing those updates and, and presentation after that workshop?
Well, I, I, I think that, and I, John, it's Derek, I want to point out the other, it's, it's, I think too, the councilman's question is, is cost recovery. Make sure that as these costs go up, we're matching, and as, this is an enterprise fee, it should be paying for itself. I think it's valuable to find out what our neighbors are paying for the purposes that we're not, you know, being too tough on, on residents or future residents, because a lot of this is new construction. But given a light of what, a lot of what we've seen, as Lisa's presentations, what the state's looking at, possibly, and some of the letters we've gotten from DOGE as well, as they're trying to see, where are your revenue sources and how are those being spent? And so I think that should, that should be the priority, is getting back.
Correct, and I also believe Senate Bill 180 has some language in there about fees.
Yeah, we could, there's only, there's limits on how fast we can increase fees.
Making sure that we're not underwriting the cost of permits.
Right.
And just as a recommendation, I would not combine the two. The land use is a completely separate discussion of policies that you'll be providing to us, which may engage other consultants as well, so keeping that separate. And then additionally, I think that community development has discussed with staff, bringing up the impact fee, because we, that is a requirement, the impact fee is a requirement of review. It's not a required to change them, it's a required to review them for consistency with your comp plan and with current conditions. So that's something we would probably want to incorporate as well.
So I think, so we're comfortable with what John said, them going through this, and then us having a, a longer conversation with all of those details put together after the workshop? So we're doing it in an all-encompassing way?
I would not suggest doing it, encompassing in that respect, as these are two totally separate issues.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, but I think, the first part is you do have August 6th coming up, a future, a, a land use workshop with Special Counsel David Theriault and Dr. Margaret Bean.
So following that.
Following that would be a realistic timeframe.
We could work on something.
The 60 days that you suggested, Jesse, that sounds reasonable, doesn't it?
I think it does.
Okay, so 60 days.
And if you like, we can incorporate some recommendations on how you would move forward if you want to, if, uh, the next steps and the.
We wanted to address.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Everybody comfortable? All right, thank you, Jackie. All right, next, we are going to do update on hurricane recovery efforts.
I just have a couple of brief updates. We wanted to thank the legislature. We were able to receive the 2.5 million dollars for the Beachy Nourishment Project of the 5 mil, the 5 million that is owed to Lee County, back for the project, we were able to continue online. We also received 1.4 million for Rosemary Drive project as well. So, um, we'll be coming up with more updates of that and contract agreements with the legislature on that. We did receive correspondence already regarding Rosemary, the Rosemary Drive funding.
Yeah, they're working on the funding agreement, and then once we get that in place, or as we get that in place, we'll, we're ready to bid that for construction, so you'll see that coming very soon.
I did want to remind everyone that August 7th, 5:30 to 7:30, we'll be putting more information out on social media. Will be our consultants working on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. If you recall, that is funded through the CDBGDR program from Hurricane Ian. That will be a, a stationary work, workspace setup, where you will be able to visit each table and provide feedback as well. And then on November 20.
And where will that be?
At the park, at the recreation center in the gym. And then, um, also at the recreation center on November 20th, 3:00 PM, will be the old 41 Benita Beach Road DOT workshop as well. And as a, as a reminder, we are, for our August 6th meeting, we'll be meeting here at 1:00 PM to begin the land use workshop. And then as, upon completion of that, we'll roll back right into our regular scheduled meeting for 5:30. The other item I just needed to provide you all with.
The August 7th at?
August 7th is.
Is at the rec center, what time?
5:30 to 7:30.
Thank you.
And that's the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The, um, the comprehensive plan workshop is August 6th, starting at 1:00 PM.
And then we roll right into.
The regular council meeting at 5:30. And then, uh, just, we have forwarded you a notification, as well as the Florida League of Cities has forwarded you this notification. On Friday afternoon, the city did receive a DOGE letter with requirements to report on revenue, and then direct revenue, it correlates to the respective expense item. So we're working through a methodology of reporting that to you all. The letter does provide for an opportunity for an extension in time, we're not anticipating that right now. But should staff need to do that, we would notify you prior to that, prior to triggering that mechanism, so that you're aware we're asking for the extra time. We are communicating with our neighboring jurisdictions to, to understand how everyone's providing similar information back.
Anything else, councilmember reports? Uh, let's hear it, Jim.
Real quick, I like to go ahead and acknowledge the, the wonderful event on July 4th, and the partnership, particularly with the new entertainment venues downtown in terms of respecting for the performances and the, uh, light shows and all the other good stuff that event there. Mr. Moran and Sugar, Sugar Shack and so forth, I appreciate that, working in partnership with the city. Thank you very much, I appreciate that, it was a great event, well-attended, and, uh, was something else that I don't know, uneventful, so, thank you.
Nigel.
Yes, sir, there was no TDC meeting in July, so nothing much to report there. Although, again, some of our local entities are looking at that for funding, and we should be paying more attention to that as well. I'd like to give a report at our next meeting briefly on letting everybody know where money is going. We have the two locations that the folks at Midtown, which is Zuckerman, that, uh, that project is now moving forward. They provided two locations from. They provided two locations from six, seven years ago, council for public art. And really pleased to report that the Art Public Places Board came up with two wonderful sculptures. The problem that I have with them, when you said that you look.
I'm just hoping it's not a roller skating banana.
Oh, it's not going to be the banana. I think that you'll find that your, your board members are the ones that chose the sculptor. What I'm, and suggested to them, the board was fine with it. I think they're a little overpriced, so I'm going back to the sculptor to sharpen his pencil on his bids to the city. I don't think council's got any problem with that. And then a couple of months ago, I was looking for a report on the number of gated communities that we had in Benita and Estero. And I reached out to John and John Dolmert said probably a good opportunity would be go to our property appraisers office. And nothing against them, but they didn't know how many gated communities that we had in Benita Springs. I know. I was surprised too, but our property appraisers said, you know, that's really a good idea. So they got together with the county who also didn't know how many gated communities we had in Benita or Estero. It's, it's questions you think somebody would automatically have an answer, but they didn't. Here's where we are so far between Matt and Mr. Harner, Dave Harner. We now can confirm that there are 50 gated communities in the city of Benita Springs. And there are 39 gated communities in the city of Estero. So that's phase one of my request. Phase two was now tell me how many doors are in each one of those gated communities. These are things I think we would like to know as council people. Being as this is kind of ongoing, is there anything you all would like me to go back and ask beyond, you know, well, now we know the number, now we'll, we'll know how many doors. Is there anything in that report that you think that either the county or the property appraisers office could provide us with as far as data goes? Nothing political about it, it's just.
I mean, it should be.
What is the purpose of, like, what are you searching for?
Well, what I was initially searching for is some of the services that we provide our citizens. Where's that money going? I was really surprised by that. We had 50 gated communities in Benita Springs. So.
But those gated communities take care of their roads, their lights, their.
Some, some, you know, some things that we look at, are we assuming when we look to do budgets? Well, some lakes are not. I mean, I can tell you right now Imperial Harbor has two lakes in there that are, Matt, is that correct? Owned by the county still or supposedly taken care of by the county? I mean, finding out that there are things that our gated communities are responsible for and in some cases not. But if you don't have the data to make your decisions on, just a data guy, I like to know where our money's going or where it should be going.
And then we're going to send in code enforcement to double check everything?
Why would we do that? Code enforcement's doing a fine job, as it is.
Okay, well, you are into just getting facts and doing nothing?
No, Laura, there's doing nothing about it. For example, we're making a decision on community policing. Okay, when I look at it as a former law enforcement officer, there's a degree of attention that would be placed on non-gated communities opposed to gated communities. And I don't know if you all, but I'm surprised that we have 50 gated communities in Benita Springs.
I think the only supplemental question, I don't think it's for the people that you're asking, is that it really boils down to where do they have real people for security versus electronic gates? Because in theory, that is a supplemental breakpoint for law enforcement and that type of thing in terms of patrolling and stuff like that. So, but there are a number of communities that have gone to a pure electronic gate with no, no person there that provides for means of immediate reporting, so.
But even in gated communities, when I'm in trouble, I call 911. I don't call my gate. And actually, they don't do anything but just drive around. I mean, they don't enforce anything.
So I didn't mean for this to be a subject or targeting our law enforcement. What I was looking for was data. When we're looking at providing future services, when we're looking at what we need to do in our planning, knowing the number of gated communities and how many doors that represents as opposed to the total number of doors in our community, I think we should know that.
But so then, so then we minimize our police because we have gated communities?
Laura, I'm not focusing on police. You asked me one of the things that would help in making decisions in the future, knowing the number of gated communities and doors that we have as opposed to non-gated communities and non-gated doors. That would be helpful. But also beach services, things that we're doing in the future, planning for events, who's going to participate in those? It helps. Social services.
Chris, go ahead.
Just to report, I had a conversation with Pulte on Benita del Sol, the, the new housing going up off of Paradise. If you'll remember, we were at 335 housing units going in there. They are down to less than 50 lots that have not gone to contract. So we've gained 285 households so far up there. The beach re-nourishment that took place. Now, I haven't looked at the entire Benita Beach, but the part that is covered, that covers Benita Bay, that 40-foot addition to the, the beach, that washed out with the little tropical element that passed through July 3rd, all that sands back into the water. So there's, Adibotana has set up a meeting with Representative Garrison, who is the incoming Speaker of the House on, this Friday. He will be incoming in '27. And so I will be attending a breakfast along with some other people to discuss what we can do to see if we can finally get a critical erosion designation for all of Benita Beach. Whether or not we'll be successful or not, I don't know because the EP operates under their statutory authority to look at science-based data and, but I guess the question's going to be, well, if it wasn't erosion that took the sand, what did? So we're trying to get that whole, we're trying to get answers to those questions. And perhaps Representative Garrison can, can give us a hand. The Wonder Gardens, I think they should have their Department of Ag final inspection.
Thursday.
Thursday this week. Once they're passed, the Otter exhibit, the Otters can be brought in and the Otter exhibit can be open. And I'm sure that there'll be a, a special event for that. And in addition, the, if I have this right, the pole barn's been taken down. There has to be, that's going to be, that area is going to be used for special events, weddings, you know, fundraising events and so forth. There has to be some work done with respect to the pavers that are in there or going to be in there. Ground has to be leveled out a bit.
Safe.
Safe. So that work's going to be done as well, so.
Just to clarify, I think we had asked that we bring this to your attention because it, it would fall under the priority one funding, which you already have in place because it's not ADA accessible currently in the condition that the leveling is. And we will be working with the Wonder Gardens to show them the alternative we come up with. There'll be a cost associated with that and a contract that we would bring back to you all. But it's under the priority one requirements as well because it isn't accessible currently.
Just a question, Arlene, can pavers be used and, and still be ADA accessible?
Yes, as long as they're engineered, designed at the right slope and, and they're maintained properly, yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
That's all I got.
Okay, Laura.
I just want to say what a fabulous job Laura Taylor and team did for the 4th of July. It was fabulous. I think there were 20,000 people there. So next year we'll have more garbage cans. But it was so wonderful. They did a phenomenal job, phenomenal. Thank you guys.
Jamie.
I really don't have much. I, Chief DeWitt did say they had their meeting this past week and they too voted all of in favor of keeping their mileage rate at the same also.
Mayor Gibson?
Mike?
And he may have dropped off. Okay. Well, I will move on unless he jumps, jumps in. And I want to say thank you again to our state legislators, Jim Did, for the beach money and Rosemary Drive. That's, that's really going to be, that's going to a great place in the city. That helps us out a lot financially. So Senator Martin Batana, both shout outs, very good job, very helpful to us as a city. I had three quick things and I'll, I'll make it quick. I know we're here at the end. But for those of you who don't know our city clerk, Mike, he is awesome. He, he has been, he came over from Collier County. He's been a part of big, big operations. And he, every now and then, he has some really great ideas that don't necessarily get some attention. We went over three things this morning that I think are things that I'd like to try to make actionable items potentially and I'll give you guys some thoughts. One was roll call. Roll call, as we have it per our charter, goes by district. So it goes one, two, three, four, five, six. So if you were very politically astute and you wanted to know and had an idea of how somebody's going to vote or if somebody's the linchpin on a vote, it's very easy if you know how people, I know how you're going to vote on things. I know you're going to vote on things. I know you're going to vote on that. You guys know I'm going to vote on things. Probably for the most part. So my point is, we don't, we don't have the issue here. But looking forward to future councils, it may be advantageous to make it so that roll call is random. Most municipalities have it random for that specific purpose. So that if it's a close vote, they know it's a three, four, two, three board or something along those lines. And they know that Councilman Folic is the, you know, the linchpin or the one who's going to go whichever way. If you have to go first, you know, and you're district one, now we know how the vote's going to go. So it's just one of those things that, you know, if people wanted to play games later on in life, we don't do it here. We don't. But other municipalities do have it set up that way for a reason. So you don't know who's going to go in what order. So just something to think about. I think it could just be something for the future generations. And it, like I said, we don't abuse it. I'm not bringing it up because I'm like, hey, you know, anybody's gaming anything. But it's, it is understanding how your colleague is going to vote when you're really doing this and you're putting it out in your mind, you're doing it. It's important.
So does Mike have a suggestion?
Well, first of all, we have, we have an administrative code that governs how the procedures are for city council meetings. So we would have to, I'd have to go over this with the city attorney and the city manager to look at how it's currently written in the code and, and then perhaps propose some alternative language to council to consider if that's the way, what council would like to consider.
Because previously that is the way we did it. That is, there was, our previous city clerk had.
He did use to do it that way.
Correct. So I don't know when, I'll have to see how, but I have a change happen, but that is the direction it always has been. The original roll call to start the meeting is in district order. But then there, she would have sheets of just jumbled orders that would call each row, each call after that.
We'll take a look at it and perhaps there's something we can go back to easily.
So and then number two, this is a really easy one and the people in the public won't necessarily relate to this as much as the rest of the council. But we get thousand-page PDF documents that have our packets in it. So unless you want to bring a wheelbarrow in here to bring it, bring home paper copies. Because I'm, I'm, I hate to say I'm old, but I'd like to look at paper copies. I don't like to do it on my computer. So if you're going to print out thousands of copies for each of us, hyperlinks would be a lot easier so that people can go on the website, or you can send out a hyperlink. And then if I want to look at all 78 pages on this, then I can do it without having to go through all thousand pages one by one by one. Hyperlinks is a very just, it's an easy solution. So we don't have to have these thousand-page documents getting sent around. So I, he thought of that. I'm like, dude, you're absolutely right. I think, actually this week, the council wouldn't be, the general public wouldn't be privy to this, but when we're sending out the, every week we get on, on Wednesday or a couple of days before the meeting, I'm sorry, on Friday, we'll get our packets, right? So they sent out the packet this last week and Nigel was like, hey, does anybody have a wheelbarrow? Right? So point being, I think that hyperlinks could be something that could be productive for us as a city. Mike, I think it was a great idea. And then number three, automate the online application process for city committees. So right now, if somebody applies to be on the outreach committee, Veterans Affairs, tree committee, whatever committee, they have to pretty much like do a printout, do a, fill it out, do a PDF and then send it back. We could do, we could just automate it so that they could do it online. And then it's significantly easier. Nobody has to go print anything, write it, upload it. It would just kind of bring us into the appropriate century, I think, if we could do those things. So I don't know if each of those should be individual or if we could put all of those on one or if anybody has any negative thoughts about any of those. But if not, I think that all of those are actionable items that we could.
We would not need to vote on that. Those are, that's administrative process. But the only thing I would just, with the hyperlink, we just confirm that what, the link that we have is ADA accessible. That's, that's the only thing that we need to work through.
But we still get a printout of the packet, but not all the.
That's what I'm wondering. So what is?
So like MPO. We get the top green sheet and then the rest have the.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change the pack, the hard packet. But the way that Deputy Mayor Purdon described it is those of you with a iPad would be able to just, you know, click on the link and pull up the green sheet on, under an item, pull up backup material.
We already do that.
Well, it would be a link that would be provided right for also our, our users on, online. And the hyperlink would be accessible even if it's a PDF document. But we, you know, I'd have to go over this with city manager and IT and we can, we can look at options. I, I know getting a thousand-page, you know, agenda is, is challenging. So we can look at some alternatives and some ways to.
We could do like how MPO does it and Derek is pretty familiar with that.
It's just, it's like from the, the first.
Hyperlinks.
Yeah.
Hyperlink saves on everybody's inbox size, number one. And number two is just kind of, it's just kind of brings us up to the 21st century, I think. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't detract in any way. You could still get hard copies of it. But this way it's not all done in such a huge mass like that.
Well, I think we all know, but Mike and your staff, how long did it take to put this, the, the physical packets together? It's what, three people and hour and a half, two hours?
Well, definitely took a long time. We work as a team. But this was an unusually large agenda. We all, we all know that.
So the only recommendation I would have is that the, for instance, Councilman Carr pointed out, the MPOs works pretty well. However, I have seen a lot of jurisdictions which have, you pull up the agenda, it's got the agenda and then you can click and it goes to separate pages for hyperlinks, that those don't get updated, that they break. And then there's a public meeting going on and people say, well, I don't see that presentation and there's a whole big wringer roll. So what I have seen work and maybe this is what Mike was thinking is you have the PDF, the whole big thousand-page thing, but the hyperlink at the top is internal to the PDF. It sends you right to what you want to do right away. But that way it's easier to catch those kind of mistakes and the record is cleaner.
Chapters in a book.
Yeah. Because we're going to have to keep the records in that, in that form ultimately anyway.
Like public companies doing their 10Ks, they've got hyperlinks on the table of content.
I just wanted, I wanted to thank Mike. So Mike's amendments, all three of those. Those are not my, my intellectual property, but I think that they are, I think that they would serve the city well and I appreciate the, the discussion this morning. So that said, I just want to thank the council, thank Mayor Gibson. You know, I may never ever be in this seat, so it was one time, one time only. I hope y'all enjoyed it.
And you did a great job.
I hope everyone enjoyed it.
Absolutely.
With that said, thank you all very much and have a great day.
That takes us to.
Oh, public comments. Actually, a public comment. Any public comment? Going once.
Once more.
Twice.
Public left. I'll bend in the back.